To order. An early morning gavel for once in the city of Westland. Uh, this is the city council's goal-setting retreat, which we do annually. I want to welcome everybody. Looking forward to a productive and fantastic year ahead for the city of Westland. And I'm happy to open the floor up for any opening comments from everybody. The agenda was posted online. We've got a lot to cover today. And by the end, we'll have some draft 2025 city council goals. And then we will continue to work on those at meetings until we get them adopted for the year. So I'll turn the mic over to Council President Bob Gardner and the whole city councils here. We've got city manager here, several of our staff are here, and we've got a member of the public in the audience as well.
Thank you, Mayor, and good morning, everyone. And thank you for those who have come early to be here and work with us. And I'm excited for coming year and my next term. And I'm honored to serve as always. Thank you.
Council President, any other opening remarks? Mr. Williams, thank you for your collaboration on the agenda today and for all you do as well. Uh, so seeing no other opening remarks, we can just dive right in. And now we have a member of the public here, so we'll switch to public comments. And we can welcome up Beau Geno. Speaker today. Thank you for being here early on a Saturday morning.
This microphone makes me feel like Gene Rayburn. I'm reaching back on that one. Um, I, I believe I've met most of you. Um, I just met the mayor today. Welcome. Uh, it's a pleasure to finally meet you. It's a pleasure to meet you, uh, Mr. Williams as well. Thank you for having me. Um, and thank you for taking my comments. I'm here regarding the health and future of the neighborhood associations. As Council President Baumgartner mentioned during the last city council meeting, their current situation is concerning. As of today, there's a plurality of NAs that have gone dormant. We are on the verge of losing at least one and probably two more in the next month or so. This will mean a majority of the NAs will be dormant. This will also impact the neighborhood association presidents as it is or will have leadership issues, if not quorum issues, due to lack of members. I don't have any short-term answers that will magically reverse the current state. I don't believe there's a panacea. Just like the microclimates we have in West Lynn, after reviewing the bylaws of 10 of the 11 NAs, we also have many micro communities. Okay, and possibly a macro community. Given the many differences of these communities, I'm not sure a one-size-fits-all solution exists. Unfortunately, letting them go dormant might be the best short-term solution while alternatives are researched and explored. However, having that many dormant NAs means that a good portion of the city will be missing out on the representation, benefits, and connections to their city government that having an NA conveys or should convey. Obviously, they're going dormant due to lack of community involvement. My first theory is that this is due to people not knowing what the benefits of an NA are. Also, what and how NAs can be beneficial to them. I think they might also be concerned about the time commitment needed in order to be involved. If this is the case, it is my belief it can be easily addressed with an education campaign to teach the community what they are missing out on by not having an NA. People only seem to complain about government not being there for them when they need government to be there for them. However, in order for government to be there for you, you have to be an active part of government, the whole "by the people" part of the constitution. One of the things I've learned in my professional trade is that you can no longer rely on your audience finding you. You need to actively go out and find your audience. I think this might be a lesson that also applies in this case. I don't want to be presumptuous and assume. I know the long-term history of the NAs. I am rather new in town. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe people aren't aware of what some of the NAs are or were about. Maybe people are avoiding them for this reason. My hope this is not the case. However, if it is, I think a re-education program could be in order. Most people I have encountered don't even know the NAs exist. Admittedly, the number of people I encounter is low as I am a hermit and suddenly leave my house, but I digress. I am a big believer in looking at things from different perspectives. Think Robin Williams in the scene in Dead Poets Society where he tells his students to stand on the desks and read their poems. To give them a different perspective. Twit, as much as I love the postcards and newsletters, maybe we can learn from the lessons mentioned above and try a new perspective and a new, a few new ways to reach our audience, the citizens of Westland. My faith in people wants me to believe that people read the newsletters and postcards before they toss them in the recycling bin. But the pragmatism, but my pragmatism in me fears that they don't even put them in the recycling bin. As an example, the videos that Mr. Williams does to explain how the budget works, et cetera, are fantastic. Let's do more of these and take them even a step or two further. Schoolhouse Rock for Westwood. We can even get Cal involved. Um, I can see the dollar sign in your eyes, bolting out, thinking about how much this will cost. Relax. Don't be alarmed. There are ways of doing this without spending a lot of money. I have additional ideas, but I don't want to waste any more of your time today. I look forward to further discussions as I believe the NAs are worth saving. And putting a Band-Aid on the current situation to temporarily fix it will not address the underlying issues. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to being involved in finding solutions.
Thank you for your thoughtful comments this morning. Council President has a follow-up.
I just wanted to thank you so much. Um, so many things are going through my mind, but the first first thing that popped into my mind is this is exactly what I have been talking recently with our council members about. Um, and you have identified it and illustrated ways that we can address it in an excellent way. I, I really actually highly value fresh eyes and being new to a community, I think, is a very interesting perspective. So I really appreciate that you are taking the time to come here and share that with us because I think it's very valuable. Everything you just said is very valuable.
Thank you. And as I said, I, I do look forward to being a part of the solution as opposed to being part of the problem.
Thank you for that.
We'll be in touch.
I'm gonna take a notes. Any other? Well, a great public comment to kick off, to kick off the goal-setting. Thank you. Um, so the next, um, item is to review our agenda for today. Uh, and kind of just go over the what we're going to be doing and the outcome at the end. Uh, so I guess I'll turn it over to City Manager to uh, kick that off and then we can just engage in a dialogue.
Thank you. I was just about to dig into my cake here, but I will wait a moment.
Sorry.
Uh, not at all. Uh, greetings, everyone. Morning. New year. Lovely to see you all. Um, this goal-setting comes a little earlier in the month than usual, but I think it'll be, uh, fantastic. We have, um, the earlier we do this, I think the easier it is to figure out, um, how to implement the next steps. And if we have budget implications, uh, it's great for us to know. So I think the timing is excellent. Also, later in the month, uh, or even into February, um, delays the direction you can provide to your community advisory groups, as an example. They are soon starting to meet in January or February. If they know what's happening, we can help with that. So I think the timing is outstanding. Just thinking through the agenda, the way, um, that I've been thinking about this and, uh, been working with the mayor on this agenda, I've been thinking about, um, this idea originally came from several of you. Uh, I don't need to take credit for it. But thinking about a longer-term plan than just 2025, even though years ambitious. Um, you really have this 30-month period ahead of you, as I've been thinking about it. So, uh, we're going to be working on a biennial budget that'll take you to the middle of, uh, uh, two and a half years out from right now. And if we can think about what your priorities are for this community over that period, we can adopt them into the budget and be working on them for several years. So maybe we think about what are some specific action steps for this year? And what is a 30-month plan? Um, we talked about a five-year plan, a 10-year plan, all of that is possible. And we could, we could be working on those things this year. Uh, I think that would be an interesting conversation to have with you is what is the long-term vision for this community? Um, it seems to me that the stability in membership on council is a vote of confidence from our community about what you are doing and the directions you're leading the organization. And I think it gives you the opportunity to think about, um, putting a longer-term stamp on some of those and really setting, setting the course in a positive way. So that's how we, um, that's how we were thinking about this agenda. As I always say, I don't need to say I've been doing this for 40 years. Uh, as I, as I've said, the last three years of doing these, these retreats, this meeting is for you. Agenda needs to reflect your needs. Um, we need to make sure that you're accomplishing what you want to accomplish. Um, so I'm just here as a facilitator. You have, uh, staff experts to help on a number of the different topics or to catch the thoughts and figure out how to, how to work with them. Um, but the way we thought we would do this, and again, this is entirely up to you. I will have no pride lost if you, after, uh, this little interim, decide to say this isn't at all, uh, what we want. And let's call an audible and do something different in part of the day. I have 100% plan. We thought we would start with a status report on the 2024 priorities that you've had. Um, we have a couple of folks here. They're going to help me with those. Um, we do have a couple of directors that were unable to attend today. Um, send my condolences to Eric. He's an entire family sick today and, uh, he stayed home. Uh, Darren Wise had a previous vacation plan with friends, long-term. Um, and, uh, just a couple of other folks didn't be allowed to not be here because the rest of us could catch all of it. Um, but I appreciate you both, if you didn't make time out of your day to do this. So starting with the 2024 priorities and thinking about what might you want to accomplish over the next two and a half years on these projects? Uh, there's a number of follow-through options, for example, on the vision planning. What are we going to do with the vision plan? Why is it important? And how could you implement it? And I have in my mind also Councilor Groner in our last discussion saying, can we please have some specifics? Can we, uh, feel good are good, but specific targets are good too. So we'd like to hear some ideas on those and we have some thoughts. So starting with that, um, status report, but maybe writing down, um, they all roll their eyes when we get out the flip charts. But the flip charts help me in my brain, catch thoughts and figure out what we do, why we love it. So self-aware. Uh, so I, I thought we could write down some thoughts, capture, uh, where you want to go. And think about this really as a 30-month plan is my focus. Starting with that priorities, um, you have a number of people in the community that have been working on the communities we have. You have the community advisor groups meeting all last year that have, uh, some of them have done reports and sent proposals to you of things that they're interested in working on. Um, we thought that the best way to present those would be for each of you as liaisons to present your colleagues with a report on what those CAGs are doing and what you're hearing and what they need from council. Um, heard me say previously, the, uh, the dream for me would be that council has a set of priorities. Those are passed through to advisory groups that they're working on the same things you were working on. And that if any of it has anything to do with budget, that we think about it, propose it, adopt it as budget so that everyone is working with vertical integration. I think that's really important. We have oftentimes had community advisor groups that have none clear purpose. And the more clarity we can provide, the better. So the CAG reports and also your neighborhood association reports, I, where you're the public comment on that. We got that scheduled, uh, after lunch. Um, but also a very important piece. Let's talk about what the NAs are thinking and, and hearing and how we can help them and how they can help you. We have proposed work in status reports from partner agencies that might be a little opaque to a member of the community looking at this. Uh, their own agenda, but our thought is you all and we all work with a variety of agencies out in the world. South Fork Water Board, False Lock Authority, uh, ODA, you know, all these other people and all these other organizations that are doing great work. Um, why are you liaisons to these groups, uh, other than just sort of, it's interesting? How can there be synergy? Might any of it have to do with budget? Uh, Warren and I were just reminding ourselves of the, uh, budget commitment that we had made to the Locks Authority. It's really important that all of you know what's Locks Authority doing and what might they be seeking in future years and confirming that a thing like that is still a priority for this group. Uh, I think it would be incredibly helpful. Um, also in thinking about the CAGs and the partner agencies, um, some discussions that you have had in your meetings come to mind about how do you liaise to those groups? Um, how do you report back? Are we reporting back? Are you reporting back in a useful way so that all five of you know and so the staff knows what those groups are doing? Um, and I think if this, any part of this agenda wants to be, how do you report out? Uh, we've talked too many times about, is there a form for reporting out or is there a set of questions? Uh, maybe we could pin that down to. We thought, um, this was a, this was a request specifically from the mayor, uh, using our, well, you didn't request using lunchtime for this, but having a section on the agenda to talk about the upcoming legislative session. And we have a report from Doug Rigs to contract law just about the same. Then sort of moving into the wrap-up phase this afternoon, uh, we planned some time to talk about the budget. Warren will be giving us a masterpiece presentation on the upcoming budget, which I'm looking forward to entirely. Um, you have heard me say, and apparently members of the community have heard me say that I think the budget is probably the single most important thing we do. It's the definition of our priorities and our abilities and our passions. Uh, so let's talk about the budget and the timeline. Because, um, six business meetings from now, we will be adopting. Ponder that. Six regular business meetings from now in June will be adopting your two-year budget. So that's not a whole lot of time. I hope that didn't sound terrifying. I didn't plan saying that. But I just realized, hey, maybe it's more. Oh, no, it could be more. Um, and then pulling it all back together and, uh, we use the word finalize and talking about your parties. And you may not be able to get quite that far than we can. Maybe we can have a final draft of what these either 2025 or 30-month priorities look like. And I love your feedbacks, whether 30 months is the timeframe to think that. It just struck me that this is a real opportunity, the timing of this, with all of you being very, very familiar with what's happening. There's a real synergy that can happen today.
No.
And then, uh, journey sometime this afternoon when you're done.
Where in 30 months comes, is that from the budget?
Yes.
Kind of timeline, because that'll be the time for the next biennial budget.
Budget and six months to weed it out. That's our thinking. So that takes us, uh, takes us through to July 1st, 2027. That's future.
I fly.
Okay, so that, uh, that is, that was our thought initiating this agenda. And I think this would be a fantastic moment for you all to see if this makes sense. Um, times were our guesses. You can manage your time. I'll help you. That was our thought.
Any thoughts on the agenda or questions, Council President?
I appreciate the 30-month look forward and knowing that the 2024 goals kind of tagged on to the 2023 goals. You know, as a city, we know the services that we need to provide. And so then focusing on certain areas. And I think of us the 30 months so that we get to the end of the next biennium is a good way to look at it. Thank you.
You have any thoughts on the agenda today? Everybody feeling good? I didn't receive any comments from council. It changes, so, uh, Councilor Groner.
Yeah, uh, in view of what we just talking about, maybe we ought to change the title from 24, 2024 Westland Goals to perhaps 2025 Biennial Goals.
Good thoughts. So maybe we can come up with, it sounds like there's a consensus on the doing a 30-year. I mean, 30, 30 months. 30 months, 30 months, uh, kind of strategic plan, so. We will figure out a title for that. It's like that, rather than just 2025. I think that makes a lot of sense because we're both. A lot of our goals are, the things that we're working on have been years in the making. When John was talking, I was thinking about getting on city council and talking about historic city hall. Getting that renovation underway, and that was in 2021. Now here we are, it's getting ready to open in the next few months. And the two vision plans, waterfront and Vision 43, we've been talking about that since 2021. And now here we are. So that's basically a four-year, three to four-year time period. So I like the idea of kind of a longer-term look, uh, personally. And excited to get to the point where some things are almost to the finish line. There have been priorities and set new priorities. So I've not seen any other comments on that, uh, agenda. Uh, we could just dive right in then into the kind of look back at 2024 priorities and begin working on 25 months if we're ready.
I believe that, um, some of these topics you know as much or more, uh, in any cases than I do. So this is not intended to be me talking for an hour.
Maybe you could.
Maybe I'll set aside, but I thought I'd just, uh, briefly, um, say a couple of thoughts about each of these and then see what their position is. Um, and the first one is a classic example of me not maybe talking at all. Uh, your first, uh, priority, and these were not ordered necessarily, uh, completely. Putting you out of the master. And you were opposing ITO of I told it. And this is a great example of, uh, a topic that some of you know more, uh, than I do. Um, we've had a lot of success in, um, opposing tolling and changing the pathway. But, um, as we'll talk more about lunch, uh, tolling is not dead by any means. It's still very possibly a tool of the state reviews, a tool that we might like them to use at certain places. But I, um, do think that continued attention to funding of the transportation system and the impacts of a, any potential tolling in, uh, our area are worth discussing and worth council prioritizing. You have seen ODA's recent update where they pushed out the timeframe for the Abernathy Bridge project and increased the costs. And as I said, start thinking about this as a billion-dollar project. I think that's probably how we should all be thinking about it. Because their most recent announcement, uh, extended the costs up to, um, $700 million. It is just going to keep growing. And they said in their press statement that the costs were going to. So, and they're still going to need money to pay for that project. And that doesn't even encompass the extra lane that we had, uh, hoped for. We in the Abernathy Bridge, Dan Stafford, in order to make it's. So I thought I'd maybe stop there and, um, hear reports from all of you about what you know of this. And what, I think, reach these topics, um, is it still a priority? And if so, what are we trying to achieve in the next 12 to 30 months? And how might we capture that so the community knows what we're doing? And we are up here.
Maybe starting, so kick it off.
Yeah, uh, I, I think we can congratulate ourselves and especially congratulate you, Rory, uh, for the progress we made on the 205. However, uh, as John just said, we're not done yet. Uh, other tolling proposals are coming along. And somehow our Abernathy Bridge needs to be paid for. So I think we have to stick, uh, to our, uh, priorities. I don't, I, I think we can remove this from a first priority and relegate it to one of the later priorities. But again, I think we've had some success.
Anything else, Council President?
I think that maybe this is a goal that could be included in a broader goal that we will be talking about at lunchtime about engaging our state representatives on issues that impact our community. One of those would be tolling 205, but there could be other, um, priorities regarding housing and things like that. And have a broader, um, collaborative work with our state representatives on things that we know will impact the community as a whole, rather than a specific stop tolling on 205 goal.
Good thoughts, and Council President.
Thank you. And I would agree with that. I also was thinking of how it might go under transit and transportation possibly even. So, but obviously, um, there are improvements that are required of our regional transportation infrastructure. It has to be funded somehow. So we want to be making sure we're part of the conversation. Um, I think the most important takeaway that I had from tolling was the experience of, of going out and advocating for the city and, and talking about I, challenging, actually, the equity framing that tolling was being presented under, um, as many times in places as we could because the fact of the matter is that our community was going to be impacted across, and most importantly, people who could at least afford to be impacted by it. So just keeping on that conversation is really important. But to talk about solutions too, uh, to suggest, you know, be part of the conversation, not what we don't want, but what we do want.
Great. Council on.
Well, as I recall, the tolling was shelved the same day you lovely people appointed me. So I had nothing to do with that, but, um, that was fantastic work by all of you who were involved. Um, a video was recently released on YouTube by a fairly big channel about that. It featured our, our friend Dean Sur, actually. It was a really good video and it, it reminded me, something I already knew, we all know. ODA has a funding problem and it's only going to get worse. And it's only going to get a lot worse. So as much as we opposed this because it was unfair and poorly, uh, conceived, we might want to make sure we're very supportive of whatever other funding solutions they, they start proposing. Because things like Highway 43 are greatly impacted by that. So however, we can support them and that seems important.
Thoughts? Agree with everybody. Um, and, uh, I, from talking to Doug Rigs, it sounds like tolling is not dead. And he recommended, as we'll talk more about lunch, that an advocacy approach, like reminding the legislators of the financials that we, that, that we were able to uncover, the charts that we were able to uncover and the impacts to the city. Uh, because they need to keep that on the radar of the legislators going into the session. Because it could easily come up given what's going on with Abernathy. And tolling at Abernathy alone is the nightmare scenario that was contemplated by those financial charts and the financial data that, that showed hundreds of millions of dollars. It probably was costing 3-point-something billion over time, two, three, I can't remember the exact amount. Two, several billion dollars over time to pay for 300-something million tolling bonds upfront. So gotta keep that on the radar because it's inefficient. Um, and maybe we're not so close to the interstate bridge and, uh, other places like that. Um, so it sounds like that goal is still a goal, maybe folded into a broader transportation package, goal that we have. Makes sense, everybody? Makes sense to you?
Makes sense to me. Um, later on, as I was already mentioning, we have a transit and transportation goal last year. You can definitely keep that category, uh, and, and hold it in other purposes. So I just, maybe I I forgot to, so we were talking about this, writing down some, there, but I can't. Just writing down some thoughts that we can all get out and make sure we don't, there are any other thoughts on.
It feels like the, the coordinated advocacy had kind of died down after tolling was shelved. Uh, so I don't know how to pick that back up. That was a big part of the success. Was like working with the cities and the county on that topic. So maybe we try to, uh, reach out to our partners and get that, get a group going for legislative session. In January and later this month even, uh, early next month, something like that. But keeping the advocacy going as a group rather than just the city would be great.
I think that would be great. Um, we have a new county board commissioner, so new competition. And they are probably going to have to pretty rapidly figure out their, um, approach to legislative issues. They've been very valuable to us as coordinators, you can see. Um, their staff, um, have, have been incredibly. Their staff have been incredibly useful over time in digging into details, helping us understand things. So it'll be interesting to see what the new board commissioners take on all this is.
Great.
This is two, two more thoughts, if you don't mind, on this. One is, I appreciate very much you starting off this topic with celebrating wins because I think that's very important. Folks around here know that celebrating wins is really, really important to me. And you have a ton of wins on this list, you really do. As we go through it, let's take a moment to remember how much you've accomplished and how much we've all done together because it's really pretty impressive. I believe that you and this organization have delivered on every single one of these priorities. And you'll see that as we go through the day, but take a moment to think about how remarkable that is. And let's keep celebrating those. That's one thought. And then the other thought that I do want to make sure we don't lose is council president. The advocacy, the direct advocacy, the individuals in this council were able to apply on this was really, really important. And the longer you stay in your positions, the more you're known. And the more, honestly, the more credibility you have as long-term leaders. And I would encourage you to leverage that value. You are able to play a different role than any of us can play. When you go down to the legislature and appear in front of a committee, it's entirely different than me or or Doug showing up there as a staff person. And you just carry weight, mayor, council president, or councilor. There's a difference down there. And I would suggest that whoever's that, keep doing that. So let's work with Doug Race to to use that that presidency. It's really, really important. And the system doesn't work without, we don't get what we need as a community without you doing that. And not just at the legislature, county board commissioners, with your other cities, with metro. Use that title in that. Be my suggestion. So but just two thoughts, celebrate wins and use your influence.
It's crazy looking back at this list and looking at the environmental assessment, remember that? Good fight back against all that took no mitigation for Westland. Oh, man. But you're right, it's just city management. Good to celebrate wins and take a look back as we chart the course forward. Any other thoughts on the tolling issue? We'll, I'm guessing we'll continue to talk about transportation at lunchtime.
Okay, so moving on then, the next on your list was explore feasibility for recreation and citizen. And that's, that was completed to some extent. A phase was completed. I wonder if anything about the mountain, something. We'll go to the wayback machine for a moment. I will spare you the absentee Andrew video on this, which would have, which does give a basic summary. But we got, we got a ton of information, you got a ton of community involvement, got people excited. We got people knowledgeable. And then we reached a phase of project where transitions needed. And maybe just really briefly remind us when that happened and what we've been doing since. And I think this is a huge opportunity for council leadership in the coming years.
Yeah, thank you very much. So it's hard to believe that this all kind of wrapped up in July. And it was such a whirlwind from when I started for all the outreach that did occur during that short timeframe to get that feedback. And so the ultimate results came back that thirty percent were in favor and around seventy percent were not. It got, oh, excuse me, that was the initial, that was the first rec center. We got closer to like forty-five, fifty-five through this current process. But the funding just was too much for the community to want to take on. And so what's happened since then, there's been a little bit, not as much as I would have hoped. But we do have a group of citizens who want to figure out how to keep this momentum going that we had and to figure out what sources we need for funding, partners that we can look at. And so we've had two meetings since that timeframe and I'm hoping to plan one for the end of the month to look at what options we have potentially for moving forward. The one thing we did get a lot of outreach during that timeframe. But there was still, it was such a short timeframe, right? There was a lot of community members we couldn't reach out to. So I think there's still some exploratory work to be done. We've been doing some of that work through our current programming that we have, doing an evaluation of who are we needing, what air gaps do we have in either age or groups of people that we're missing so that we can start to look at what are our options when our rec center comes to fruition at some point in time? Even looking at additional spaces where we start programming to show, show there is that need. So we are looking at having conversations with this group to see where we can take it. It will definitely be needing some guidance and leadership from the council on how to go about doing that. And then we have had a couple of conversations with the Y about, that was one thing that kept being brought up by this community group to say who could potentially partner with us. And so we're hoping to set the meeting with this group and why, just to talk about what options there are. So it is exciting that there's still a desire for it, but it wasn't the right time this last time. But there is a group who wants to figure out how to continue the conversation.
Thank you. Great overview. Any thoughts or comments? We, I mean, we always told the community we were going to explore the feasibility of the of the recreation center. And I think we did that. And wish those costs came in a little bit lower. But it's just a construction environment that we're all of a sudden found ourselves in in the last few couple of years where costs just dropped to the roof for the project. So hopefully, maybe the cost will go down in the next few years, who knows? Council president, you would like to get a comment?
Thank you, mayor. Yes, and I just wanted to thank you so much, Director Big John, because of the work you have done and dove right into this work as a newly hired person and got caught up to speed very quickly. So I appreciate your staff and and also your coordination of all the volunteers who worked on this. It was, that was some of the most amazing public outreach and participation from the public, but successful public outreach that I've seen while on council. So and I guess I'm going to even say before I got on council. So it it was really remarkable and also tells how much the community is interested in this particular subject. So I'm very excited about the potential with the Y, so keep us informed.
I will. And the one thing that, to be new at this position at that time, it gave me such an opportunity in our staff and the parks board to hear what the community wanted overall. So even though we may not have moved forward with the rec center at this time, we learned a lot as a department and what people are looking for out of our community for us to provide those services. So it was a really great way to start my career here.
Definitely jumped right. So as I recall, this was the outreach where we actually heard from a full ten percent of the entire population, right? Yeah, that's really impressive. And recently, when someone made a comment about how cities just do public outreach with a predetermined outcome and use it as a rubber stamp, no matter what people say. We can really look at what we did here and and feel good about the fact that we listened to the community and the fact that they weren't into the cost of this project, but they were still somewhat into the project. So, yeah, I think that's, that's something we can celebrate, that we listened.
I'm curious to know what surprised you in the listening from the public? What was, what was there for you might have expected?
Well, I had heard that we would not get much participation from just past experiences. And I, that was really shocking to see the amount of engagement that did come out. And I think honestly, in most cases, the support of it, if we didn't have the funding situation or the staffing that we need to add to it, there was truly a desire. There were some people that didn't want it solely just on the cost, and that's understandable. So it gave me invigoration of going, how else do I show this need? Or where else can we use it if we didn't have a building? What other facilities could we rent out? So I think that was what was probably the most surprising and I was thankful for that. That's my first big project here. But I I do feel there is a desire if we can figure out the cost. And I'll be honest with you, the support of our department, it was really great to get that feedback and have those listening sessions for it.
Yeah, the the feedback I've been getting is most of the questions that I asked. It's coincides. Thank you.
So how would you like to keep this on your top mind list? Would you like to think about a different way to describe it or to set some specific goals? I know that's a little difficult in this case, but do you have thoughts about just continuing priority? I guess that's a big one. Are we still interested in using our time, our time, city made for resources to keep exploring ways to keep projects together and have, no, no?
Personally, I think yes. I mean, I don't know if it's exploring feasibility now, it's more like exploring partnerships or to, you know, to build a facility or something. Because if it's not on the list, then we're going to have trouble getting those partnerships. And I think there's some promise out there with different, you know, whether it's through fundraising or partnerships with a group like the Y. I think it's definitely still a priority, especially because we we put resources, time into it and got this really positive ending where we've got all that engagement, got all the public feedback and we kind of know what, where the public's at. And there was, you know, fifty fifty basically at the end support, which is not good enough to do a bond measure at this time, but it's good enough to show that there is a desire. And if the cost went down, the numbers would potentially change. So I don't know. That's where I am at on it. I think it's still a priority, maybe described in a slightly different way towards the partnership building element. So my thoughts, councilor, right?
I think we do keep it on the, on the list and primarily because of all the effort and money that went into getting us where we are. And I've heard from many residents that we do all these plans and then we never do anything with them. So this is not something that I think that we should put on the shelf. I think we need to keep it somewhat high on our priorities with a focus looking for funding sources and partnerships.
I I agree with that. And also to reinforce our, the value we give to the community's input. So if if I was a community member who had given so much of my time and invested my, my engagement, I think that it's appropriate we continue to honor that commitment that people made in the community by pursuing this and whether it just is under the heading of continue to pursue feasibility of a rec center. Maybe it's all, we've done the exploration, but now we've found some answers and maybe some new questions. A door closed, another door has opened, so continue to pursue.
The length of the time that it takes to put a project together when Lake Oswego and heard how their redevelopment and the plans came from twenty years ago or more. This is another one. What we're looking at is we're talking to Y and learning about outreach fields. These projects take years and Y has capacity issues now. Can't work on multiple projects at the same time, but you can get in a queue working towards it, working towards the point where a decision's made that we're going to be the next one or we're second out, or we're not going to do one at all. But it takes some time. Some of our partners also have to sequence and talk a little bit more about that, partner rates, sorry. But I think leaving of this as a thirty-month plan, slated after this, could be the right timeframe for this thirty.
Counselor, right? Yeah, just a partnership idea. I know this UnitedHealthcare basically will subsidize your membership in a gym. Certainly the kinds of programs this has, that's potential partnership, perhaps Kaiser as well. I think they have a similar program. So maybe small medical center in the, as part of a facility, that could be an interesting partnership.
I think that goes to, as we said, we already have our core values for the city as well as the department. That's where we find those partnerships and what their core values are and how they match ours and what our initiatives are when we open that center up. It's, it's, I think that possibilities are endless, right? There's so many from healthcare to just even connecting other, different communities together. It's, there's a great opportunity. Yeah, thank you for that suggestion.
There is something we can start doing as soon as today or yesterday, which is really proactively aggressively refuting two misconceptions that I keep hearing a lot. One being that this was an aquatic center project. It's not like I've heard one person say that. I've heard dozens of people say that since we wrapped this up. And the other being, well, this isn't for me, it's just for the kids or something. I I think if we were able to get that message out there for a little bit longer, we might have seen much different numbers at the end. So we can start doing that now.
Messaging scheme.
Interesting thing is if we were to head down the path through the Y, maybe we become an aquatic center project again because the Y's brand is twice. And they, the strength you have there is have a organization that has a hundred-year, whatever it is, history of running pools and maintaining them profitably or maintaining, I should say. You know, I remember when the pool insurance went in and they have managed to keep that one a bunch of neutral or a bunch of positive for twenty-five years. So they know how to do it in a way that Megan and I don't necessarily know how to do it or that the community would trust that they would do. So and not to harp too badly on the Y and no character on the Y, but they're, they're one of the leading groups in this industry. So it'd be interesting. We partnered with them, then you'd have to spin, not spin, you'd have to change the message a little to reflect that new partnership and that new value. But I think under the huge image.
No, I think that's okay for it to be an aquatic center too. I think a lot of people wanted that as well, but the misconception was that it was only an aquatic center, only a pool. And with Lake Oswego's coming in right now, that also just wasn't popular.
Thank you. Sorry, a lot of what I heard from the community and from reading the survey results where there were many people that were like, yeah, this sounds cool, but if it doesn't have a pool, I don't want it. The pool was their primary focus. So I think if, you know, it's almost, you almost wonder if we just go open an aquatic center, would that have had higher favorability and forget the rest of the community's stuff? And I'm not saying that it would have because that's not the question that we asked. But I did hear an awful lot of people that said, no pool, I'm not in.
The director, Big John, finish your thoughts.
Oh, sorry about that. One thing that was interesting, again, like John said, I'm trying to harp on the Y, but it's just the learning that we're doing about others that are doing similar things, even with what you know standard as the Y. They have in Richfield, they're working with the city managing the community space, which was really high up on desire from the community and then they were managing the rack side. So I think the nice part is the opportunities could be endless as far as how, what chicken egg comes first with it, right? And depends on the partnerships that come our way. So it was really kind of neat to think of it really outside of the box of what you kind of institutionally know about the Y in general. So just continues the thinking and dreaming.
Exciting. Possibility of partnership with the Y is something we should definitely do.
So it sounds like the wrap up on this one is keep, change the wording to reflect continue to pursue partnerships and intensive authority.
Agreed. Start off the list.
I do want to recognize Megan's incredible enthusiasm. Starting on the, as I recall. Moving on, um, there's a couple here that I think may be a slightly, uh, deeper discussion. The next one on the list is Police Review and Recommend Committee. Um, this one was mostly. It originated as needed to be established and then kept on last year as making sure that it continued and were continued. Um, and that indeed has happened. Um, the committee has met, uh, generally monthly or as needed and is fulfilling the purpose, uh, set out for them, um, by your action. Um, the main staff members working on this, um, Alyssa, Chief Mahuna, myself and City Attorney. Uh, City Attorney Klein has jumped in on this one, uh, to replace, uh, Peter Hicks and Jerome Ramos who's helping us on that one. And, uh, we have been working very well as a team. Again, this is a, this is a group that's had some stability in membership now and I can't. Um, I can't over emphasize the importance of that. It did take a while for folks to get their head around how this works. Um, you are now going to get their second annual report in. Three weeks, okay. Yeah, the twenty first, um, so they'll be in front of you as council reporting on what twenty twenty four looked like. Um, there may be some tweaks to the code that are developed over time, but right now I think it's working fairly well. So the question to council would be. Does this remain on this list? I, I completely understand and value the importance of it. In terms of a public transparency and making sure the community knows that we're doing this and that you're supportive of it. It may, so I'm, I'm interested to hear your thoughts on, uh, on this one. I can assure you that regardless of whether it stays on list or leaves list, it's something that will be. Uh, all invested in and working on over twenty twenty five and beyond. Alyssa, do you have anything to add to that?
Councilor Bright.
I think that, um, we have kind of seen this come through a cycle and I think maybe having. A upcoming goal that is broader for all of the community advisory groups so that they. Know a little bit more about, you know, what their role is and how they work with the council. And so it, it, creating a role like that, it would include the police review and recommend as well as the other advisory groups.
So kind of a more general goal related to community advisory groups. Positive function of that.
Thank you. Yes, I think that's very important and, um. It, it kind of is a partner to the topic of neighborhood associations in my mind because it's about. Community engagement and volunteers and. Roles and responsibilities and clear expectations, priorities, um, who's advising whom, et cetera. So, and, and so that we can attract more engagement with our, from our community members if people understand and clearly know what's expected of them. So I do commend the work of the Review and Recommend Committee and I'm so glad that. That seems to be working. I'm looking forward to hearing their second report. But I've only heard good things so far from the public about the public perception. Um, it's obviously one of our committees that can't be as visible because of the confidentiality and privacy issues. Involved with the work they're doing, so people do have to kind of trust that. Things are, are happening the way they're supposed to be happening. So I think having a report is really important and making sure maybe that we elevate. That reporting is going to be happening in this meeting upcoming. Did you say it's the twenty first? Um, so that maybe people who have. Because it isn't as top of mind or front and center and visible as some of the other advisory boards and, and publicly accessible. Um, people might have kind of forgotten how to even pay attention to it or don't really have an opportunity. So it would be important for people to get that chance to hear their report. And obviously it'll be in the recorded minutes and the audio and video, but. Um, to, to let people know ahead of time, that would be great. Thank you.
If I could, I would have every member of our community. Tell you, there's, um. It's so illuminating to understand the way things work and to get both sides of, um. Of, uh, circumstances that happen, to hear from community members about their concerns and to hear from the police about what. Uh, what, um, their take on, on a particular incident might be. Uh, and also to get visibility into the types of things that we get complaints about, which are fortunately not. Generally not, um. I don't know, how would I describe it? Not, uh, not issues of concern about how our department is working. Sometimes an occasional customer service thing or sometimes this could have been better or sometimes why are you holding over for this? Um, but also understanding why that happened. And if I could sit down and get the CGS clearance for any member of our community and spend. Uh, forty hours over the course of a year, I think it's incredibly, uh, valuable and I'm. Honestly, I'm looking forward to some, um, new folks joining over time as have. Um, I think it's great to have a core of folks who know what they're, know what the work is and to welcome new members from time to time. And get more community members exposed to this because I think it's really just eye opening. And the last thing I'll say is that the body cameras are so, so useful in telling the story. Um, we have gotten new concerns from community members and if we all sit down and watch body worn camera footage. Tells a very, very different story, not, not necessarily the factual story that we all end up. There's, there's more that goes on and you can see from the format, but incredibly useful and just so fascinating to watch also. So I do think this group is working really well. This is one that I would describe as a success. Um, and a bit of a leap of faith that council took at that point to set it up in this way. I think there was a faith in the members at the little point and also a faith in staff. That this group could be structured the way it is and, and work. So I do think it's a win, but I do think it's a work in progress too. So.
I think that we have. So I do agree that I think we probably do the general topic of about.
This is, uh, another topic that I can take absolutely no credit for, but I'm, I'm really, really impressed with the way. This whole department and the way council approached, uh, the public perception of the department. It's just not a complete one eighty. And it's not really a secret that in years past I was very critical of our police. Now I'm one of their biggest fans. So that says a lot about the changes that, um, the policies council previously put in place here. And this committee has been able to, uh, enact to really make that change.
I also have to just give, um, a support to police leadership, um, and conduct at every level. Um, and the change that. Must be attributed to that as well, so I agree with all of, of that and I'm so proud of our police department.
I agree. Everything that's been said and I'm, I'm glad this group is functioning well. It was kind of a leap of faith from council. And especially given the fact that there's an elevated level of independence from the city council. Um, given that clearances and things required with the privacy law and stuff, so I'm glad to hear it's functioning well and excited to. Do the report and, uh, I think we can, I'll be proud of that, what that group's done. Over the last couple of years.
Fantastic. So I believe the consensus is, uh, pulled into a perhaps new goal to be talked about later. Great. Moving on and, eh, at any time, maybe ten thirty would be a good time for a quick break or anytime, whenever you want. Um, you just.
Ten thirty, we'll take a break.
Uh, okay, so the next one is, uh, define and fund drinking water system capital needs. I do expect we'll talk more about water, uh, later in this meeting, but, uh, another win. Um, thank you to Eric Lice and Morgan, uh, Morgan Muddle and all that whole team. For the work that they've done, but also for council's focus on this, um. This is a, uh, you adopted the water system capital plan on, uh, June seventeen. And the next step is talking about financing and Eric and the consultant team are working on that piece. Um, you'll recall there's, uh, tens of millions of dollars of projects called out that we could and probably should do in this community to make sure our water system is viable. Um, it's a partnership with South Fork Water Board. We'll talk about them later on the agenda. We are also hoping it's a partnership with, uh, the state of Oregon. Uh, we have been submitting, uh, lead Oregon cities and the state legislature has been soliciting capital project ideas. We have been putting in ideas for that, I mean, uh, to, uh. Seismic reinforcement of various facilities, uh, controls, all of that, modernizing the system. And so we are hoping that the legislature takes an interest in local systems, uh, for water, but. I would say probably our most basic service for any clean drinking water to homes and businesses and it's probably the thing that, um. That probably a thing that we need to keep focusing on. My question to you is, does it need to remain as a, uh, priority? Perhaps could be one more year while we work on water system finance and generally speaking, but I'll, I'll stop there and, uh, ask you what you think.
Yeah, Councilor Bright, our, our water person.
Obviously, you know, clean drinking water is, is a priority, but it's also a, you know, it's an absolute must do. It's not a choice that we make. Um, so I'm not sure that we need a goal for this, but the, you know, maybe, maybe as we move forward, we talk more about the. Funding side of it and as you said, we'll be talking about that when we talk about our partner agencies, South Fork Water Board.
I think we've, that we've defined the water system capital needs this year through the master plan that we adopted. So I agree, I think it's looking at now it's turned towards rates and funding and I, when you say the next piece is John, there's a rate analysis going on, right? That's the thing that's gonna come. So I think the funding. Is, is a thing to look at and I've also heard that the waterfront, you know, long-term outlook is not good and I've always wanted to. Address that during my time on council or at least take a look at it, so. Yeah, I think it's a. Turn towards the funding. Uh, I don't know how to, whether you just drop the define and you say funds drinking water system capital needs, that could be a way to do it, but. Um. So that's where I'm. I'm, I'm, I think it definitely needs to still be a priority because we're still working through some, the, uh. Look, getting the outlook. And is that, so we're, what is? Yeah. We got some funding from the state, we took out that. FFCO. Full faith and credit bond. Um, so is that kind of resolved the funding for that piece? Um, what is the status of the, of the?
What? Lauren, do you have any thoughts to add on this one? Uh, the. Um, several status updates, uh, one is that ODOT still hasn't billed us a penny. So this project, you know, they weren't material as slowly as I mean. Sitting in the backyard. Um, we are not sure why we have suspended any of our, for it. Laura Paul, as a council, that we were told that it was going to be immediate. Has not been, and I think it's tied to the. Complication of that project and all the other stuff that they're working on and doing, it's just not top of mind.
Yeah. Um, I know Eric Lice has reached out, uh, a couple of times and hasn't had much success getting responses about if they're gonna bill us. Um, and for in terms of the federal and state funding, we're still working on getting that and securing it. Um, there are certain requirements that we have to make sure, um, they're doing it since it's kind of a pass through. There's certain other requirements that we need to do and basically we need to make sure ODOT is running the project a certain way. In order to use some of that funding that way and we're, we haven't been getting, um, as many responses as we would like on that. So we're still working on making sure that we can use the funding exactly for that project. I know we can still use it for water lines in general, um, but we, we need to have ODOT say that they're. Meeting these certain requirements on this specific project to forward money to that.
To get the, the state and federal funding, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, the federal, I believe, the, um, they, there's certain, um. NEPA environmental requirements and in order, and since it's basically gonna look like a pass through from us to. To ODOT, the whole project, since they're the ones running the project, the whole project needs to meet those requirements. And so we're working to try to make sure that their project is needing those requirements, which we're assuming. That it would be because it is a huge project with many sorts of funding, I'm sure, so. Um, we're assuming it is, but we just need to get that documentation from them before we can get any of the funding. For that and as John said, we haven't been billed for anything yet, so it's not like we are, you know. Needing it exactly right now, um, but. Hopefully that'll become the aim soon.
Seems kind of crazy to me from a governance perspective that we have to do this. Um, we have to, for our little grant in federal, very little grant, uh, big us, little to now, little to the project, having replicate. All of the proofs that ODOT has already done. Get that money. It's just, it's nonsense, but it's the way federal, it's just a classic example of. Um. The amount of time it can take, uh, once you apply for a grant in the redaction, it's just. It's not just like we get the money in our head.
Exactly.
It does not work that way.
Yeah, there's a lot of requirements that we're still gonna have to go through and, uh, um, follow up on in compliance terms. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of terms to these grants and so just because it's been, you know, earmarked for us, we still have to meet all those requirements. And show that we're doing all these things.
And does the state money that we got, do we have to go through the same process? There's that different.
I don't believe it'll be that rigorous.
No, yeah, I don't, I don't think so either. Um, we haven't really dug into that yet.
We're just waiting for ODOT to bill us basically so we can start in. You know, that, that's unbelievable because that was like a, her. Some, some folks weren't on council at the time when, when we were going through that, but it was like, adopt this contract now. Otherwise. And it would have been so nice to have extra time to figure things out and.
Well, and it was also just stressful too because we had to, we had to do the full faith and credit obligation and. You know, we've been sitting on that money for multiple years now, um, and so it's. It's not bad for us. I mean, we are getting interest and, you know, so we're, we're basically covering the interest that we're paying on that money. But, um, it still does ha, lead to a lot of different requirements for us to track since we have that money for so long.
Councilor Broner has, and then the council.
Yeah, I, I was wondering if there's any risk, uh, due to the change of administration in Washington that some of this money may be jeopardized.
I, I do not know the answer to that. I don't think that any of the money would be jeopardized. I, I really have no idea though.
Oh, no, there's almost no, no way. Um, we have some, I think as a, as a region, we have friends, uh, there that will make sure that they fight for, uh, that money. I think the, the more the battle is going to be about future money than that past.
This is what I appreciate. The money was passed in a bill.
The money was passed to bill, they would have to go back and track it. Thank you. So to move on.
Right. Uh, Carol had a comment.
Just one more comment about ODOT and their financing. It seems like if they billed people and got paid, that maybe they would have more money than they think they do. Just, just a thought.
Uh, that makes sense to me. Thank you, Lauren.
Looking forward to that presentation.
Leave the decision here is. Fine and funding greater system capital on the list. Two planning projects are the next items on your list. We've been pretty long time lost in the past. Um, the next one is water, uh, Westland waterfront vision. And, um, you have been receiving updates mostly from Darren recently on this. I think I will not go into too much detail, but we are right now in the middle. I think I will not go into too much detail, but we are right now in the middle of a public outreach phase on the vision plan. We have some of the graphics here in this room. Planning department is our artist of the month in January, kind of super excited about. And we have some of those great renderings from the waterfront vision on the walls. And I encourage you to take a look at those during, uh, during the break. Already we've all seen them, so help us get word out on the feedback on that. But 2025 looks like, uh, to me, adoption of a waterfront vision and then moving into updating the zoning code, starting primarily in the East History Hall District. That will be our goal for the year, and I think we can attach some very specific goals for the year. And, and in keeping with having some specificity, we can talk about adoption of the vision. We can talk about a milestone on the zoning code and keep that project moving. We do have, this is a project that I think would be a really interesting 30-month discussion. What's, uh, both this and Vision 43, which is coming next, what milestones do we want to hit over the next 30 months? And are these projects, I think I know the answer, but are these projects still priorities for you as a council? There may be a, well, just.
They definitely are.
They may come with some budget proposals for continued implementation. If you are believing that implementation is important, for example, uh, the idea of, of a TIF feasibility study on Highway 43 is one thing. The idea of, uh, continued code and zoning changes in, in both of these districts. The idea of once we have a vision plan for highway, I guess I'm, well, I didn't know I just went, um, on Highway 43, could we do a feasibility study for the Bolton Fire Station property? And look at what might be possible, once we have zoning in place properly, maybe a public private partnership there, get some smart person in those, have to do this stuff. I think if there are both continued priorities for you, we would anticipate some additional tasks on both this and Vision 43, which really are running kind of parallel time wise, so maybe I'll just combine them. And then you can talk about each, uh, the Vision 43, updating Vision 40, creating that Vision 43 plan and updating zoning code would be hurdles for, for this coming down. And you have some renderings of, uh, Vision 43 process here. So great work is happening and just to remind you, this is a, this is a long-term play. This is where you identified this as a priority years ago. Put money into the budgets that we can hire the consultants that are producing these renderings. And now we're going to probably be in two or three different budget cycles on these projects over time until we get where we want to be. Councilor Bright's comments about, don't have it just be a plan sitting on the shelf. I certainly hope so, so certainly hope not. So that's where, um, could we, once we have a plan adopted, dedicate some money to certified smart person to look at a property like Bolton and actually activate it? Bring the proposals for what might be due now that you, now that you've changed the zoning possibly. I also think, just the last thing I'll say on both of these, I think we have done a pretty good job, um, communicating that we don't have an outcome in mind on the other piece. That we are really, really trying to hear from the public about what the community wants. I think our job is to present options and show what could be. And I think we still in some places have work to do on that, to show the range of universal things that could be. But I really hope that as our staff are talking to folks, they are conveying, we want to hear from you, we want to do what the community wants. We are not bound and determined of whatever it might be, uh, as an outcome. And I think there are still some comments that I'm seeing where people think, uh, window dressing, it's really not. You know, it's not, and I know that when something comes to you in the end, if it hasn't had thorough community review, um, we won't support it. And if there are, um, people in front of you, you will take their comments seriously and make sure that they benefit. So I really want to tell the community that we are, we're an open book on these projects.
Any thoughts on all those two projects? Carol?
I just want to say that the staff has just done an amazing job of being out there in the public on both of these projects. And, um, and yet, when I read the comments on the most recent Vision 43 survey, there is so much confusion and misunderstanding. So we've got people that are responding to the survey that have not been to maybe many of the open houses. We have people in the community that are confusing Willamette Falls Drive with Highway 43, which is Willamette Drive. And, um, and, 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 uh, there were even comments about, you know, that we're going to commercialize the entire corridor and it's going to take up part of Marius Young Park. Or we're going to displace residential homes that face Highway 43. And if they had been at the open houses or spoken with the planning department or even me when I was at any of those open houses, they would know that that is not the intent at all. So after all of this, the focus areas are not an understood concept. So as much work as we've done, we still have some work to do with that.
Thank you. Good, a good reminder about this, having communications targeted towards both those who've been, who've been involved, but also those who have not been involved in it, maybe just learning about something for the first time, even though the asset project's been going on for years. So the Doc's Council President, go ahead.
Thank you, and I agree with those observations, um, both about staff's work on these projects. And also the difficulty, the challenge of reaching everyone, the reality of it. And I would also ask just some specific questions and you don't have to, this is just kind of a question for discussion, not needing to be answered. But, um, you mentioned, um, the potential for maybe hiring a consultant for another TIF feasibility. Do we, is that necessary since we went through that process for the waterfront? Is that something that we could, we know enough about to do on our own? Or is that just not the way that would best be advised?
My recommendation would be to hire a team similar to what we did before. And we could, we could do, um, knowing what we know now, we could skip a lot of the process education that they needed to do.
Okay.
But what we really need is the financial analysis.
Yeah, that, that sounds excellent. Thank you.
I think it's worth pointing out that, uh, on the, the Vision 43 side, I observed that within the same week, there were two discussion posts. One came from our survey, the email that was sent out with that. The other was from an article in the news. The discussion around ours was all very actually informed. People seemed to know exactly what was going on and had very good comments. The one in the news, oddly, everyone seemed very confused and misinformed. So I would argue maybe our messaging is pretty good, uh, internally, but where's that opportunity to improve, I guess?
I don't think I would be doing this fairly if I hadn't, if I didn't say, we have a little regret sometimes about doing the two projects right at the same. They weren't intended to be exactly at the same time, but I think there has been some confusion. Um, and then Willamette Falls Drive, Willamette Drive thing, I have heard that too. Two big projects at the same time with the same goal, I think it works. And I think there's a lot of advantage to doing it because we can, we can be thinking about how they can complement each other in the same way. But in terms of clarity of messaging, it's been a little challenging. We have this open house, we have this open house, so I don't know. I have no regrets, but it's interesting to think about.
I have some specific, like, I found for this, these kind of projects that, should we get to those later? Like during the finalizing period or just kind of looking back at 2024?
Can be either. Um, any idea, it's, it works either way.
Okay, Counselor Bright, you had another comment to make?
Just to what you just said, I think maybe revise, um, revising them when we get to the end to, to kind of put in specifics, I think, I agree with that.
At the end, we'll just, this is kind of look back and some general thoughts. Is it fair to say that these projects are both still priorities to council? We want to see them through to the end, but deterred perhaps and staff wise and your time wise and your council agenda time effort wise.
Correct, definitely.
So with that, we can, we can, um, can you move on? We can probably get through the last three without a break.
Still 10:25, so we're not to 10:30 yet.
Okay, continue. I will say that we just did both waterfront and Vision 43, if that's okay. And we move on. The next one is stranded and transportation. Let's talk about some wins on this one, um, because it's important. So, um, you got a new bus line in Westland in last year, um, so this year, last year. That's pretty exciting. That doesn't happen all the time. It is a direct result of your advocacy. There's no other way to say it, both on the tolling and on transit itself. Uh, I think our mission now is to get our community to use it. So there is going to be an upcoming asset city manager where I ride the bus on, where it's, I don't know, we'll find out. But I also have some interesting news from Trimat and, um, good news, I believe. They have been looking at the way the 153 runs and they, uh, what it does right now is deadheads at Lake Oswego and sits there for a while. And they have space problems, too many buses at Lake Oswego. They've also gotten, um, suggestions from folks that it'd be nice if it went onto Oregon City. So they have just contacted us and said that they would like to run that 153 line from Willamette District to Oregon City Transit Center and back, and then up to Lake Oswego. So now you could ride a different route. And it solves their deadheading problem. It allows people to connect through from various destinations. And they're thinking of, uh, asking their riders what they think about that. But this is an early heads up from us, and I think it's a statement that they really want this bus line to work. They also, so they tell me that they've been hearing from riders, it would be nice. So first of all, there's riders. And I always look every time the bus goes by and I'm seeing more consistently one or two people on that bus. Not always, not every time of day, um, but I do think we are, um, we are duty bound to try to ensure our community knows what it is, why it's there and how to ride it. Eventually, if there aren't very many riders, there's no way we're going to get that bus to stay over time, uh, unless we get ridership. And so, um, so, um, that's just one little piece of transit, transportation. We can talk more about traffic safety, we can talk more about road mains, we can do that now, we can do that later. However, we bumped to the first system.
John, I would love to ride the bus with you, if that's okay.
Good. Your hot pass. We can all ride it together at an inaugural meeting.
That's exciting and it was fun to attend the, uh, we've been cutting for the new bus line that happened last, last year over the summer. On Trimat for the partnership and getting a line that we didn't even mention, that the 76 line is also coming through Westland, which connects us all the way out to Beaverton and Tiger and that area. So got a lot, all of a sudden last year, we got a lot more regional connectivity, uh, in Westland. And I think there was a loss, uh, with the 154, didn't go to Oregon City anymore. So that'd be great to see that, uh, picked back up so that those folks who ride that can get over to Oregon City. Thanks for the update. Good news. Uh, it's good, better news than they're taking it away from us. Any other comments?
Yeah, uh, bullet item advocate for traffic safety. I perhaps add the safe routes to schools in that item and basically crosswalks.
Yeah, John, where do you see the, uh, I had a lot of conversation last year about sidewalks, pedestrian infrastructure and trying to find some reliable funding sources for our community requests. Do you see that as falling under, this is a question for the council as well, and falling under transit and transportation? Or it's almost its own goal because it was kind of, uh, uh, one of the big projects we were talking about at the end of last year. It's like finding that funding source somehow, working with transportation advisory board to do that. So I'll have to open up the floor. Counselor Bonnie, do you have any?
I would definitely like to see us, uh, maybe triage, uh, some of the requests that are coming in. They seem fairly simple, but they're very impassioned pleas. And prioritize working down that enormous list of pedestrian safety improvements, which is pretty long and pretty old at this point. Just making a dedicated effort to going through that, I think would be, uh, it would go a long way with the people.
Counselor President, go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, exactly. Well said, Counselor Robinson. I, um, just talked to our Metro Councillor Christine Lewis, and, um, she would like to come and present to council, visit us at a meeting, in the next couple of months. And she spoke specifically about funding availability that, um, that cities can seek from Metro on pedestrian safety and accessibility. So that's a great opportunity and a good point. And I, I really, really want to emphasize what Counselor Robinson just said about, um, although we need to listen to impassioned pleas and concerns that citizens bring to us about, let's say, a specific need for a crosswalk. We also have to respect a plan and have a strategy, um, to underpin all of that so that we aren't just reacting in the moment, um, and shifting our priorities as, you know, a new thing arises. We have to be flexible and listening to new needs, but also honoring our priority lists and make sure that we're maintaining and upgrading on a structured plan. Thank you.
Couldn't have said it better myself. Counselor Bright?
I do think that in the, um, transit transportation goal, we do need to put a greater emphasis on safety. And when we talk about transportation, it should mean everything, transit pedestrians, bicyclists, you know, all, all of the above. And I think that as we look to funding this, and this may be kind of a little outside of the goals, but there are probably some inexpensive, uh, traffic calming, um, things that we could do, including paint on streets that make people and cars react differently rather than, you know, having, you know, curbs and more flashing crosswalks. So there could be, there could be other things that we could do, that we could look at.
Any thoughts?
And as Counselor Robinson pointed out, it's excellent work for our transportation advisory board. I mean, they've already been addressing it, but this is an opportunity for us to have a clear purpose for our advisories.
Fundamental question, how, how do we respond to these community requests that come up? You can rattle off, off of the top of your head, a few of them that we know about, because there's, when they come up, uh, Sunset, Ninth Street, Nineteenth Street, et cetera. You know, so that's priority for me is figuring out, huh, how to address those and prioritize and find funding available. Because it always seems like, uh, there's not a lot of, there's always a funding issue with those sorts of things. We don't have necessarily dedicated sources for us to, for pedestrian projects like that, uh, to respond to. Anyway, so I guess, uh, what I'm hearing is keep the goal as transit and transportation? Or do we kind of establish a new goal around that topic?
I'd say keeping it.
I would like to put more emphasis on safety.
I think whatever goal we have around that is going to probably need to include discussion about 43 and ODOT and how we're going to approach that. So more all encompassing goal.
Transit and transportation. All right, we'll keep with that. We'll add to it later. Finalizing discussion. Thank you, everybody. Well, we've got a couple more to get to. Let's just get through them and then we'll take a break.
Um, I will say on that last one, I was just in Sun River and their little free newspaper, they have a article, volunteers sought for traffic safety. They said, safety on trails is the number one concern they are getting from residents. And they are looking for volunteers to set up traffic safety advisory committee in Sun River. E-bikes, uh, yeah, uh, huge concerns about that. Yeah. So it's, it's not just us, no. Environmental protection and sustainable city operations was the next one, I thought. We have Dylan, who's in our main liaison to the sustainability advisory board. I'm pretty keen to share a couple of things I've been thinking about and doing recently under this. And, um, and if you were interested, also Megan had to work with Eric and other. And then if you were interested, also Megan had to work with Eric and others on thinking about equipment. And also, as we talked about, the new sustainability possible, the operating facility there. So as much or as little as you would like on this, if you wanted to come up. And yeah, that'd be great.
Sure. Yeah, so this first goal about developing an alternative fuel plan is something that's in Public Works' lap. It's also something we have a sustainability consultant right now that's helping the SAB and us prioritize the highest impact sustainability options that we can work on. They are working on a final draft of that right now and more actions and things that they can actually help us to do to get some of those things happening or happening now. Also, as part of the budget, Public Works does a vehicle replacement plan and I would imagine they will add more electric vehicles in that. It's a little more complicated with, you know, with, we can't just make everything electric all the time. Because there's generator capacity, there's emergencies we have to consider, get out, try to charge cars. We're running 24-hour operations. So it's a hard thing to balance, making it fully electric or anything like that. So I will look at, looking at the sustainability consultants priorities right now. The top, the highest impacting, the first one they've added is developing policy about alternative vehicles. That's the first one. Sustainability in the new Public Works Parks Operations Building is the second one. Completing LED lighting upgrades in city facilities, which is happening all the time, it's currently happening. And seeking funding for public HVAC upgrades and solar installations is their fourth one. And then the fifth one is looking for sustainability funding. Those are. One of, the next one is working with local businesses and developers to encourage installing EV charging, which is something that the mayor and I are hoping to go meet with some of the developers. We just haven't had time to do that yet. And then increasing opportunities for community members and businesses to share and repurpose unwanted products and creating distributing directory with repair services in Westland. So those are all from the sustainability consultant, which overlap a lot with some of the SAB's folks as well. That's all I have right now. I mean, SAB has a lot of those things as well that you see. We'll go through all those. Yes and no, not exactly. The SAB this last year did do an accounting of carbon and how much fuel we're using and all that kind of stuff. And we do have that on our website now. So we kind of have a baseline of it. But we don't exactly have what all these changes, where it would get us, sort of, yeah.
We'll get a meeting scheduled in the early part of 2025 with some of the landholders. But the intent of that is to kind of sit down and meet and say, how can we help partner with you to get private sector involved in bringing electric vehicle charging infrastructure to the public? Because so far it's been all the city and we pursue these grants. It's great. And we've got, I think we're building one at the library soon. Is that true?
Yeah, we have a grant for one at the library and one down at Historic Main Street.
Awesome.
And one is federal grants, so we're talking about that. We're a little worried about all the requirements and getting going, but yeah.
Bureaucracy.
Bureaucracy.
But the private sector should be helping out with and partnering with us on getting some charging stations in. Similar to like you see at Lake Oswego, when you go to the Safeway, there's public charging there and all over town. So we'll do work on that. Counselor, bright?
We do have a new code that requires developments of like apartment complexes or other commercial development to at least put in the infrastructure, not necessarily the power. And so that could be where we start finding the pinch points is, is there sufficient power transmission available at these places that we want to put the charging stations, especially if you want to put in fast charging?
Counselor President?
Thank you. And thank you, Dylan, for this information and the Sustainability Advisory or their work. I know they're very dedicated and I definitely think this should remain a priority on the list. I have some specifics, but I don't know if this is the right time to talk about them because we're trying to get through this list, but keep this a goal.
Keep it as a goal. We will do that. Dylan, thanks for all your work. You're the disaster preparedness guy, historic city hall, sustainability. You're, you're a lot for us. Thank you.
His duty as assigned is his full list of duties. Dylan, that is awesome. I don't know if we need to talk specifically about Public Works. We could if you're interested.
Let's talk about it.
Or you're going to hear quite a bit about it upcoming meetings also, but.
I'm excited about that one. So maybe we'll talk about it. Well, we can talk about that at the, you know, budget timeline and the finalizing 25 hours because I think that's a definite priority for me, to put that building on the list.
Okay, so we will keep this goal. We can talk about some specifics later on in the day and adding some bullets and some specific goals. Great. I wonder if Doug, he was the one who came to us for the last item, which was diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. Doug has long been our moral compass on this at the city and our de facto leader, but also has ceded some of that leadership role to another person. So can you share some of the things that we've accomplished and some of the things we're looking forward to?
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity. We've worked a lot over the last few years, especially with diversity, equity, inclusion and adding the space of belonging to that. We've recently, in the last year, we finished our second cohort with our cultural competency with staff. So over 20% of the staff at, at Westland have gone through the cultural competency. We've put that a little bit on hold for this last year, the remainder of this year. And we hope to bring it back in coming years to focus more on some things we can do across the city with our employees. Part, what we did was we took a role that we have in our outreach library and Kimberly Rhodes, who's been active with me and others on our diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging task force and asked her to, to take on 20% of the time as our DEI specialist. So she's helping to coordinate our efforts in that area and is doing a great job as met with our city department heads and with much of our city. And we'll continue through this year to do that, to, to bring that sense of belonging here and how we can work at it, including working with Tricia Brand, who will continue to be our diversity, equity and inclusion belonging consultant, who's worked with us for the last probably three or four years. This has been great. The task force is now a committee with their own guidelines, rules. And of course, this last year, John can talk about his, getting the mission, vision statement for diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging for the city employees, which has now been shared out with all of us. I think from a programming standpoint, one of the things we've struggled with or we've, I won't say struggled, we worked with, is some of the key events around, that are national or international events that include components of belonging. Of course, I think everyone could agree that everything has a form of belonging in it. But we're talking about our underrepresented and marginalized communities, especially how do we lift them up and bring them up? And one of those forms can be through some programming. One of our events that we do is Juneteenth. And this last year, we pivoted a little bit and I think in the right direction towards being more of a celebration from a performative standpoint with, you know, a fair or a gathering, which is great and wonderful, to a more educational side. And we had Valerie White come in and speak to us as a city. And I think it was very well received. And I think we're going to try to get ahead of that a little bit this year and starting now to bring in more folks from around the city to help us organize what would be a similar event. I think as working with our consultants and talking with others, when we can do something that is seen normalized as part of our regular routine, it becomes more impactful than just saying, oh, we're having this big celebration. And that's what we do for these events. And the rest of the time, we've, we've checked a box. We're not interested in checking boxes. We're sitting and having our community feel like they belong in all its places. So we think education is one of those key opportunities we look forward to continuing to do that. And would love some of your input and guidance on that. So I think what we'll put together is some open forums and for people that want to come and talk to us about what they would like to see from an educational standpoint around Juneteenth and also including some of the, our known groups here in the city that have worked with us in the past, both at the high school and in our community. I think that's one of the things that we'd like to continue to see council be supportive of as well as continuing to support the consultancy that Tricia brings to us. She's been a great advocate in helping us continue with our committees and task force work, also with helping us to see a grander vision and get us to that place where we're continuing to build that sense of belonging in our community and our workforce. And hopefully, as we extend it out into our community as well. So that's what I have. Is that, however, you think, John?
Comments or feedback, Counselor President?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for all of your work. It's just amazing to watch this transform over the last several years and how grateful I'm hearing people are to have it, both the availability, but also just the knowledge. Even if people aren't participating in it actively for whatever reason, just to know that this is a priority for the city is, sends a message that's really important and healing. So thank you for all of your work and Kimberly and the rest of staff's work. And, and also the staff who've participated in some of the cultural competency work that maybe it's out of some people's comfort zone. And I really applaud people for being able to get into a space that maybe they're not totally comfortable in and, and gain value, valuable team working information about how to be in their, on their teams, but also in our community and serve the community. This is such a wonderful staff and city. Everyone is so genuine and so dedicated. It's really heartwarming. So thank you for being a part of making that happen.
You're welcome. It's really a team effort and I can expand on what you just said. There is moments where things become uncomfortable, but I really believe there's been a sense where people felt, okay, I can be my authentic self. And even if my idea may be different from other ideas or maybe not even the prevailing idea, I still have a space where I can talk about it. And then people find that common ground. And I really applaud the staff that have worked on this. It's, yes, it's been with me in a, in a role, but it's really their work from the task force, the committee, Kimberly and Tyler from Parks and Rec have done a great job, Tyler Harmon, I give a shout out to him, and Alyssa, John, and everybody else on the administrative team that works so hard to make this part of what we're trying to do and be authentic about it. I think we think about that a lot. How do we make sure that what we are doing is not performative? That, because when we can do something that's authentic, when we can do something that is repeatable, we can build these strengths in belonging and some people in our community can come forward and see, hey, I, I, there is a safe place for us here, both in the workforce and hopefully in the community at large as well.
Awesome update. Any other comments or? Look forward to supporting the DEIB work ahead. This is council.
And one of the themes that I'd love to talk about at some point is start location. Thanks. That's a, on our public based projects and just as how we should offer. So I would hope we leave that in at some point today. I keep looking to do that, yeah. But it doesn't have to be now. It doesn't have to be yet, but I, I think that's something that is just really, really important over time. And I think another area where you all can do this.
Yes, thank you for mentioning that. Of course, everyone who gets within earshot of me knows that that's a really important priority for me. So I definitely will, would be happy to engage on any level and wherever and whenever it, it seems applicable and share both the knowledge that I've gained this past year in the certificate of tribal relations program that was so generously and kindly helped, assisted me in funding to take that course. And I'm using it every day. Honestly, I use it every day. And I just yesterday had a conversation just to put it into a specific anecdote where I was talking to someone who was referring to consulting with a tribe on issues at the Falls and I found myself asking now, why that tribe and not another tribe? And where did that information come from? And who's the source? And, and I just thought to myself, you know, I wouldn't have known this a year ago. So I'm so grateful that, that we can then move forward with more competency on these really critical issues. So, and I, I'm hoping to be able to engage my knowledge anytime anyone is interested in. And I certainly don't know everything, but just what I'm learning and still growing with, I, I would love to use and put to use. Thank you.
So I wonder if there's a council action or also project related to this. So you thought about sort of formal interactions that governments can have with each other? Is there a place for that also? This is not a scripted, I know that sounded like a very scripted question, but it's not.
And what about on the waterfront project in particular?
Yeah, what we're, definitely, to a relationship.
I definitely think so. And I, I'd be open to whatever form people think that should take. I'd want to talk to Director Erickson, for instance, and thoughtfully do some work on that. It's very complicated. There's, there's so many layers. And I don't want to get into too specifics because that's not what we're doing right now. But yes, the answer is yes.
For to assist you in any way we can. And I don't, well, there may be other priorities. There may be new priorities. That could either be discussed now or later on the agenda. We sort of talked about keeping or folding or rewording these, which I think is great. But I'm at your, I'm at your disposal. Maybe take a break, think about how to do this next. Heck.
Okay. We're going to take a break. We're going to reconvene at 11:10. Take a 10, 15 minute break. Order of business prior to lunch is that we will go over the community advisory group year-end reports and status updates from our, some of our partner agencies that council works with. So how to begin? Should we just go through each of the reports and scroll through them as a councillor? Does anybody have a proposed process to go through the tag reports?
I thought going through just as they appear in the packet would be, makes sense, but whatever people want to do.
Do we want to talk about advisory groups that maybe haven't turned in a report, but at least from the council's perspective, if there's, because we didn't get reports from all of them at this point?
Do we have a list of who, I looked at them all last night, but I. Which ones have not submitted one?
I'm going to look to maybe Dylan on this. He can improv it, but.
No, no pressure.
I don't know if the president's group council, they don't have one.
Okay, we'll just start. Should we have them pulled up on the screen up there or is it something? Is that, is that? Oh, no. Right. So we're going to pull up so that people from home in the record of the meeting reflects that we're, what document we're looking at will pull up. It's on the agenda page. It's the community advisory group reports that were beautifully compiled by. that were beautifully compiled by Mr. Digby. I believe. Thank you. Very pleased when I read through these over the last couple of days, what some of our groups are reporting. So we will begin with the arts and culture commission. Is who's the liaison to arts and culture? What is liaison like to do their?
What I would say is liaison could lead this. Who is liaison to the city?
I think that's Councilor Groner.
Councilor Groner.
Want to go over that twenty twenty five goals and council direction portion? There you go, right up there.
Like a sweeto there. But more art in the city. I don't think too many people are opposed to that. Okay, basically adding some community involvement at the music in the park and moving nights. So basically, it's a very, it's a very active group, very interested in promoting artists within the city.
Thank you. I was pleased that they said at the end that this year we have flourished and grown our reach with the dynamic facility and improved engagement of group members. We could be our own division for the city. We'd love to see more. Of course, we just highlighted incorporating art throughout the city. That's great. So I think that their proposed goals and their need for council direction, I think is looks good. And I think just enhancing the collaboration between city council and arts and culture, which would be great. Like this, I like their idea of streamlining that process for art.
Okay, I wonder if you want to add any of this? Other things that the group's thinking and just a reminder of what we're doing on an upcoming agenda.
Thank you. So this group's worked very actively with the Councilor Groner as well. This the liaisons for it are Cheryl Hill and Kristen Chrisnot, who are two of our library staff and and work with me, but they're the day to day folks. I really appreciate their efforts. On Monday night, you'll be, as a reminder, you'll be hearing from that group and myself in regards to the bike kiosk as well as formalizing the guidelines that you to how we go about making a recommendation for percentage for the arts projects. And both of things will be on your agenda. But I really want to emphasize the hard work that this group has done and also the collaborative work they've done with other organizations, with Land and Main Street as well, working with them for this bike kiosk art. And I think this is would be great input from the council in the coming year to as this now we have a formal process as of Monday night, hopefully, that they'll be continuing to help build some of those public funded art projects that we have for our percentage for the arts funds. Also working with Director Big John, as well as she oversees the facilities of the city and the parks. So I think it's a great opportunity. This is a great group and they've worked really hard.
Any other comments on arts and culture commission? On the council president?
Just as we go through it or at some point today, I would love to reflect on on membership of these groups. So and and as we go to each one, each board, say they're at full capacity or they're short members or, you know, kind of, I'd like to get a sense. I know I have it on the, I mean, I can look at it, but kind of as part of our process here just to kind of keep in mind with the thought of planning for which which ours, I mean, which aren't making quorum. There's, I mean, I would like to know that some of our advisory boards, if that's attendance is a problem or if if meetings getting canceled is a problem, et cetera. I don't know if anybody else would benefit from that information. But as we're talking about our advisory boards generally being successful, and this is not aimed at the arts and culture commission at all. I'm just saying, as as we go through this process, I'd be I'd benefit from knowing some of that information. So are they operating at full capacity right now, for instance?
I'm looking past you to Kathy, who I think between the between the staff liaisons here and Kathy and the council liaisons, we should be able to answer some of the questions as we move through. Kathy, do you know specifically the answer? ACC?
I I don't know if they've been made in quorum or not. I wouldn't, I wouldn't know that. But I do know that like there's three vacancies and we have three applicants.
That's all. I mean, I I think that would just help us to kind of, as we go, and it can happen at any point, but. Director Erickson might have.
So we, we only meet when there's a quorum and there usually is, and we are at full capacity, I believe. There may be some appointments coming up, opportunities, but we've been, we've been operating for most of the time. This is the Arts and Culture Commission at very involved capacity, full, full capacity membership.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Good suggestion, Council President. So we will go over the reports and then perhaps as part of it and finalizing our our goals, we can talk about CAG roles with with those goals and then provide some direction. I know that's always something that's community groups are clamoring for. They want clear directions. So we'll work on that today. Councilor Bright, did you have a comment there? Oh, okay. Sorry. That's sorry. Councilor Bonnigan?
I just think if we're going to do that, it would be really, really helpful to a lot of the groups to have a defined mission statement like we talked about with historic review board, but to do that for each of them, even if it's fairly simple.
We could consult with them. I don't know if we can do that all today, or but we could put that on, I don't, put that on lists of some of the consultant groups if they want to do that. It's hard for us to come up with a mission statement perhaps for each of them on on our own.
We could. Isn't that the point of them, that we're giving them a directive to advise us on? So.
Could be.
This has been interpreted different ways over time, I think. Everyone, I believe, would appreciate clarity. In some cases, boards have been operating somewhat independently, coming up with ideas and trying to generate some traction. In others, council has given some specific direction and asked for that. I think they are meant to be advisory groups. It's in their name. So there are specific. What in my observation, what happens when the council doesn't have specific direction from the groups, they have their own priorities. And they don't always align with our budget abilities, our staffing abilities. And I think it's been, it's been a finish challenge over time. People want to feel useful. They want to make sure that what they're doing is appreciated and wanted. And the closer we can get to that clarity between you and the groups advising you, I think it would just be incredibly helpful.
Yeah, I think I've I've noticed that two different groups from the liaison for had that situation going on where they came up with their own and their priorities conflicted with each other. And that's not the situation I want to see us in. I don't think we need to discourage groups from coming up with their own items to suggest to us, but giving them something mainly we're on seems important.
Yeah, I'm certainly we want their input in their mission statement. But I think we ought to start the ball ruling and give them what we expect from them and then see how they react.
Councilor Bright?
I was probably going to talk about this a little bit later, kind of at the end of the community advisory groups. But one thought I had in looking through the twenty twenty four council goals is we identified which advisory group might be engaged or have an input on our goals. And maybe in that section of the goals, we can more specifically identify what we need from the advisory group. We just talked a little earlier about the transportation advisory group. And so, you know, if we're going to do a focus on safety, can we have the transportation advisory group have a project that they work on and do some research about how we can improve safety or develop slow streets or any other kind of traffic calming? Can that be an objective of the transportation advisory group? And if we select an advisory group that has an input, for example, on the the planning ones, we've got almost all of the advisory groups have some kind of input. So if there were more specific asks of them based on the council goals, then at least they've got a direction.
A related question is whether you have the right mix of advisor groups to accomplish the tasks that you need done this time. For example, we talked about public safety about which may not be needed anymore. So not to risk complicating the transition.
Yes, it's still on our list. I mean, it's listed as an advisory, so the public safety. And and people ask about it periodically. So but there are overlapping subject matter. So the Transportation Advisory Board could be working on safe streets and safe transportation modalities, but also a public safety advisory board that that could also be under their purview. So maybe that's why it's a question.
I may. Thank you, Kathy and Dylan, for finding this. This section is very relevant. Draw your attention to number two. So for members of the public watching, we're looking at section two point zero two five of Westland Municipal Code. And it it actually directs the city council to, it says, the city council shall provide direction and when possible, a work plan for the CAG to work on during the year. I think that's laudable, very laudable, but also would require some effort. And I think the maybe we can think of it as a two way street here where the groups could help you do this, but you could approve a set direction. I do agree that the HRV's request recently is helpful because they put it together, made a specific recommendation to you, which can then be considered in priority setting and budgeting. It would be useful if other groups have the ability to do this. This is helpful to me.
Well, good discussion there. Do we want to go through each of the reports and then provide direction later or try to provide direction for each group now? It's a question that I have for the council. I would suggest just going through the reports and as we set our priorities, we can assign groups to the particular, help us carry out the particular priorities we have at the end of the start of the end discussion, but to open to debate.
The only thing about that is I would say let's make sure we include every single group when we do that.
At the end?
Yeah, as long as we have something for each group, then it's all good.
Good, good thoughts. Thank you. We will do that. I'll rely on council to make sure that happens. Councilor Groner?
I want to propose that we allocate some work for the council. Say, if you are a council liaison for a particular advisory group, maybe come up with a draft mission statement for that group.
How does council feel about that?
I can certainly see being involved in that, but I think maybe just taking that task to the advisory group themselves and ask them to work on that and then bring it back to us. And certainly ask the liaison, you know, provide back and forth input.
Yeah, you're saying the word draft and their meaning that I want feedback for that. Yeah.
It could go either way. I think if you wanted to dress them up, take it to your bid or council president handles actually has a.
Um, yes, thank you. And I appreciate that point. I think it's important that we do standard. One of my concerns with with liaison role to advisory boards is that there isn't a standard for reporting was one of the concerns I had. There isn't a, and in some places they're lacking direction. But having one person on council, namely the liaison, be that person to, I think, maybe not maybe as effective as having us all decide what what their mission should be. And then it is delivered, as you say, by the liaison. But then for their input, for, you know, how they would like to do the work that we're asking them to do, maybe how they would like to do that work specifically. But what I'm seeing on that that code that was just pulled up was, I think what I had understood before, which is that they're looking for us. They're looking to us for direction. And then they are, the liaison's role isn't to direct them, but is to just deliver the information of of that structure that they're supposed to work in and then report back on how they'd like to get that work done. So it is, it is complicated because we're wanting them to have some independence, but they need to be working within a bigger picture so that conflicts don't arise, unintended consequences of miscommunication or misunderstanding expectations and roles and responsibilities doesn't happen. So we need to have a structure that they're operating in within. So that would be my input on that. And also we change, you know, we're going to be maybe changing roles here pretty soon. And so that will always become an ongoing as continuity challenges, staff liaison changes. That continuity can also cause disruption. So we want to have a framework that they're working on so that that can always be there, no matter who the liaisons are serving at the time.
Good thoughts, everybody. A city manager has his hand up and I'd like to try to keep going because we're running behind.
I actually, I would propose that the definition of the role of all of the groups and the way you interact with them is more important than the specific words from individuals. So I think this is an important conversation. That's what I would suggest. This two point, not not the one highlighted, although thank you for identifying this highlighted one, which is about council liaison roles. But I want to come back to two point oh two five, number two. As I'm looking at this right now, it really implies to me that 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 wording is almost more like a task force. Like there are topics of interest to council that are assigned to a group to work on and bring you back the rock that you asked them to find. That section reads more to me like task force than it does like a standing group that just exists forever. And I think, I, I, I actually think that every volunteer and every community volunteer would be happier to volunteer for an important topic and a project than a standing group that didn't have a clear role. And so I think to the extent that you could get here, it would be really valuable. So.
You mean providing that direction?
Providing that direction, which might be, and I, this feels like a lot of work to me every twelve months doing this. But as I'm thinking about thirty month work plans, right? What are, what is the advice you need on these thirty month work plans? And maybe it's, maybe it's a really different set of way the advisory can use work. Just thought.
Counselor Ray.
That's why I was thinking as we come up with our specific goals for the next 30 months and we identify that, hey, this is something the Sustainability Advisory Board will be involved in. Don't just say they have an interest in it, but say this is the ask, this is what we need from them to help us move our goal forward.
We can do our best to get done with that today. And if we have to schedule for another meeting in January to continue, I don't want everybody to get overwhelmed thinking we have to, you know, sign everything out today. This is the initial discussion and we can always continue if needed. So with that robust discussion, thank you, everybody, for your comments. Let's just continue on trying to give some quick reports for our advisory, advisory groups to go over the reports. And then we'll move on to the next item on the agenda and then pick this conversation back up as we finalize work on our goals and give us the direction to the CAGs. So CCI is next on the list.
That would be me.
Go ahead, take it away.
Okay, thank you. So we have a one, so as far as our current CCI, we, membership, we have our Chair Shannon Knight, Vice Chair Vicki Olson. Shannon Knight has applied to return as as has Vicki, but we do have a vacancy. And we have four applications, including the two that are returning. So that looks like we're doing well as far as attendance. We have the staff liaison role has changed a little bit for CCI recently. It's currently listed as Darren, but Darren, uh, planning director wise. But the recent meetings have been staffed by Aaron Planner, Aaron Goodell. So I'm not even sure if that's been a change or just a substitution for the that meeting. So as far as the advisory, they have been needing, they have not had quorum issues that I can recall at this moment. And there's, I'll just go through the challenges and just to kind of summarize challenges for 2024 communication with and between other community advisory groups, continued confusion in the community on engagement in development review project versus land use planning projects. They list their 2025 goals and council direction. The question was what goals and recommendations to council? Would your group like to work toward advising council on in 2025? So they specifically said appoint the CCI to work with staff on development of a citywide engagement plan and provide funding in the budget to hire a consultant to assist additional feedback. They note, please recognize the planning staff for outreach of the waterfront and Vision 43 projects, which we have done and will keep doing. And that's about it. If anybody has any questions, comments?
Thanks to the CCI and we will move on to Economic Development Committee.
Wait, that's me. Basically, they have had some meetings that essentially had to be canceled because of forum problems. And I think they are struggling a little bit about what their goals are. Mostly they have been talking about the Fullback Falls Drive market area. And yes, I think we need to give them a more of a focus in terms of their mission. Do you have any comments?
Yeah, that was, that was exactly what I heard at the last meeting, but kind of changed over in the middle of the year. And they only had five meetings, two of which or three of which were the economic trainings, which were fantastic. We all love those. But the group itself with the changes in liaisons and then not necessarily having a specific mission. They felt very listless. They didn't really seem to know where they were going from here and specifically asked me to ask us to give them direction on that. They felt like not having a specific goal or a specific charge was keeping them from having forums regularly. I could understand that. And then I guess there's a lot of wiggle room for how their work could support our goals. So yeah, we can go a lot of directions with that, but they seem very flexible and very willing to take things on. They just didn't know what to take on.
First, I've expressed a desire to accomplish something as a committee. So I think there's definitely a role for this group and a lot of stuff we're working on. So we'll, as we finalize our goals, give them something.
But I'll also add that Chris Myers is incredibly enthusiastic, having just joined that group. And our last meeting was just really cathartic, I would say, just a lot of frank discussion about what is this group doing? And I think they all expressed a lot of confidence in him. And they all like each other, but yeah, they need something to do.
So you turn your mic on to the manager, Lynn. Go ahead.
This group, I think, has faced this challenge in every of the eight years that I've been here in the city of West Lynn. And I think there's a couple of pieces at the heart of it. One is what is economic development in West Lynn? In other communities, economic development advisory groups have worked on development of new areas, you know, industrial recruitment strategies. In West Lynn, our economic development is much different than many places. And it's hard, it's been hard to identify what advice is needed. I remember when I started here, they were working on lowering rents for commercial leases. But there was no action that was there. What it ended up being is they were hearing from people that rents were too high, but they had no actions to do related to it. So I think it's, it's challenging. When you think about Highway Division 43 or the waterfront plan as economic development drivers, they definitely are. Each of them has their own advisory group leading that project or working with staff on that project. And so it's been a challenge to, okay, so what's the EDC's role when there's a group that has? So I, I think this is where the exact struggle has been the whole time is what is it that you need for a group of members? Thinking of interested in economic development, what advice do you need?
Counselor Ray.
I'm wondering if the working groups for Vision 43 or the waterfront could have or should in the future include a member of the Economic Development Advisory Group? Just as a, as a way to get that collaboration and that kind of cross pollination. Because they, from working on the economic advisory, they might have a different perspective than some of the community members that are on that working group.
They said possibly the working group for an update to economic opportunities analysis. What is the economic opportunity analysis? Is that coming down the line? That's a project.
Um, it, well, sorry. No, not, maybe you, maybe you want to talk about it from having attended those, Jerry, Council meetings.
Well, we were thinking about doing a third of those more specifically focused on West Lynn issues because the first two were kind of, Woodburn was brought up a lot, I think. But we were thinking about bringing him back apparently to answer specific questions about West Lynn and prepare him ahead of time. And I think all of us who attended thought that was extremely valuable. But that's, that's really all I know about that. I would add that that group started having a discussion about encouraging short term rentals. And while they're doing that, I'm thinking about the Housing Production Strategies Working Group that I'm a liaison for. And that was specifically identified as something we're not trying to do. So we have those two things converging in not an ideal fashion.
Report and we'll talk about this group as we, our priorities. Give them, try to give them a, a clear direction. This clear direction theme comes up every time we do goal setting for the pack. And it's disappointing that EDC would not have been able to do that yet. Maybe this time, hopeful that everybody's brains together, we can do it. Next is the Historic Review Board, which is my group. And they were unable to achieve quorum at one meeting. They've been very active and I'm grateful to Lynn for picking up that group and Schroder Planning Department. We just had a joint meeting with them, so I won't go into all the details, but they have proposed a few ideas for them. So I think giving them clear direction will be easy to do. So HRV mission statement, they work on chapter 58, the Community Development Code, and the CLG grant application that we talked about. So that's the Historic Review Board. Next is the Library Advisory Board. Which didn't, they didn't have a lot of feedback to share, but I think they've been doing a great job. Doug, do you have anything from the Library Advisory Board that you'd like to bring before the council? Who, who is our liaison at the library? Oh.
One thing I would say is, is they work really great together. They're really engaged in wanting to help the library. And I think this is also an opportunity to, if you want to look at, we have members of the Library Advisory Board that that are represented from our unincorporated area because we need to have that as far as for agreement with the county for library distribution funds. That works really well. And also we have members that are both on our library foundation, which is our fundraising arm and the Library Advisory Board, which is really great because they work really well together. And so when you're looking into the future and opportunities, I think seeing a, a board that advises from a library component as well as one that helps sustain the library with our bookstore and other grant fund, or sorry, fundraising activities. It really is a good partnership and I think it's one that could be potentially used in other areas as well.
Yeah, I know that was very good. Any other comments?
Yes, this is a committee, Doug, that I would say council hasn't made specific assignments of work or this committee is sort of self operating with library staff, talking about library topics. Hasn't really made the connection to council or hasn't.
I mean, I want to state, no, I think that they do work very well together. They would include, it's not that they don't want to include you. There's, they also, there's not a whole lot that they think would be beneficiary to come forward with. But what I would say is we've been really lucky, well, from a council perspective, administrative perspective and a community perspective in handling the bigger issues around libraries that our nation faces with issues around censorship to being in front of it. We had opportunity to weigh in when the school district asked us to, and instead we, we made our own kind of proclamation rather than become part of their review board, talking about how we handle it as a city. And because of that, I think it's really important that it's not understated the fact that we don't see a lot of people challenging materials in the library because we've made our positions as a city and as a library and as a community very strong in that area. And so I think it's, we benefited from that. So I think when, when needed, appreciative, we're appreciative of the council stepping up and having commonality and agreeing on what we want to do in regards to some of these larger issues that are, our rest of our country is, is facing. Where we are not facing them at this moment, and I know what we probably hopefully won't, but we've, we've constructed a plan and a way to go about it that I think is representative and reflective of our community.
Thank you, Director Erickson.
Doug, you echoed their sentiments. They put something in there, censorship and how doing well on that standpoint and not having issues with West Lynn. With that, we'll move on to parks. And that is Counselor Bonnington. And I'm grateful to the group for a very thorough and detailed year end report with even a table in different colors. Unbelievable.
That was the very first thing I was going to mention. And they were all happy to give Vicki credit for that. I guess she sat down and did all of this herself, which is incredible. There, do you want to come up and join me, Megan? There were definitely not issues with quorum compared to other, like relative to other groups. This, this group functions incredibly well. They're very respectful. It's, it's a very well oiled machine, a very robust institution, I would call it, probably among our best advisory groups. But a lot of their work this year was about the rec center. That was something we directed them to look at. Extensive work there. There was the down to earth school issue that we directed them to help create rules for businesses operating in our parks. And that is something that's ongoing. There's the renewal of the Marriott Young lease. Cannot say enough good things about the number of events that the Parks Department has put on and see. To that.
Advisory Board is also the only group.
They did, and I was there and she was not, and they spent seriously an hour talking about how fantastic of a job she has done. And I thought that was extremely well deserved. She has done a fantastic job of leading the group. But she wouldn't say this, but the group did want this to be expressed. They felt like perhaps there was too much being directed at the Parks Department and at her limited staff. So they were hoping we would take a look at relieving all of that strain to some extent. Lot of things about their accomplishments, but otherwise they are looking to us for GOVON completion, the Blamette Park Waterfront Planning and a non motorized, non motorized boat park. Resolving the off lander situation. Say more about that. And then just a kind of utilization of the park resources. Aside from that, they're very complimentary of us and they were hoping to have stability with their liaisons. Yeah, tuning my own horn, but not exactly. What would you like to add?
I was going to do that for you, but they were very complimentary of the council of what you've asked of them with the Recreation, Community Recreation Center as well as Counselor Bonnington's attendance and engagement with everything going on there. So they really, kudos to you all. Thank you. The one thing that I have made it my priority is that if they don't have an active decision to be made, that we are bringing, telling our story about who parks and recreation is. Because even though some of those members have been there for years, they have, others have not. So we're bringing in staff to show what they do, talk about upcoming projects that are happening in the park. talk about, um, upcoming projects that are happening in the park on a daily basis, not each month, or what the Recreation Department is doing. So um, they are a very strong group. I think it's a little bit easier probably for Doug and I is that our board is directly well, you know, coincided with our department. Um, but I feel like what I'm doing right now with them is teaching them who we are. So when a decision does come up, they have the full breadth of what we are doing. So um, they are, I think their one question is they want to make sure they're giving you what you need. And that's kind of what that, that goal was, is what is the process for communicating with you? Certain uh, advisory boards are coming to you to present. We haven't even thought about that. And so what are you needing from them if it's not a project base? But they are definitely, um, helping us uh, evaluate what we're doing and processes. Um, and then the asset utilization is part of one of my goals for this next year is that we're evaluating our programming currently. Um, not only what we're offering, like I mentioned before, but our fee structure as well as how we're operating our parks. So that's part of that asset utilization is making sure we're building our foundations strong.
Great, great for that group's engagement and parks topics to include the forest school.
I would also mention that they are the group who were surprised to find out that council liaisons report what happens in these meetings to council, uh, at every meeting. So I mentioned that in a earlier council meeting, but, uh, I guess that's not totally known amongst advisory groups that we actually do discuss what goes on regularly.
Any other, I thought I saw a hand over here as well. No? Okay, Mary, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. And, um, thank you, Director Big John, for that information. And also I, and thank you, Councilor Bonnington. And I noted that Councilor Bonnington was specifically, um, complimented in their very detailed report, which, um, I enjoy the formatting of, so maybe we could take some takeaways from it because it helps me to just at a glance see the members. Um, you know, we see these people, we appoint them. Um, and then I don't always memorize. I don't have every advisory board membership memorized, so it's helpful. I do note too, back to my topic of membership and that they, um, have two returning and four total applicants. And, um, so no worries about parks, um, advisory board membership and library. The same, we have a lot of applicants for the library board. And so that's great. Thank you so much.
On to the planning commission, which Carol, go ahead.
So the planning commission had a very, very busy twenty twenty-four. Um, what they're looking to in twenty twenty-five would be the implementation of the housing, um, production strategies. And, um, they've also provided us a list of things that they would like the council to be working on, that they could be, um, helping us with, and that would be adopting the housing production strategy. Creating affordable housing opportunities, um, and adoption of our two large planning, the waterfront planning and the Vision forty-three, which would also include zoning changes. And, um, improvements to the community development code. For ease of implementation and, um, increasing community engagement. The last couple of, um, of hearings that they had, there was no public comment and nobody in the audience and nobody online to participate. So they had some questions and concerns about whether or not the city's WebEx platform was reaching enough people or if there was another way that we could get more people engaged in, in those hearings.
Thank you. For the planning commission. Sustainability advisory board. Is that sustainability advisory board yours, Councilor?
Yes. I'm a very happy group.
They have a real, really robust report. Part of, uh, Well, I think it was a good, good overview and, uh, I appreciated that and I appreciate their involvement. And I know that we've talked about some of these priorities in the past and we will miss them during the our, our setting of our priorities. Very active group and a good group, Bonnington. And they also have to acknowledge they gave a shout out to Dylan Digby for his work and said, his support as staff liaison has been invaluable to SAB. So, thank you, Dylan. On to the transportation advisory board. That Council President Baumberg.
That's right. Thank you, Mayor. And, um, so looks like the membership of transportation advisory board, um, has a vacancy and I don't think that we have any applications. Um, and our staff liaison, um, planning director, Layis, isn't able to be here today. So, um, and I believe the person, the the other person, there's a vacancy and there's a person whose term is up, who I don't think is reapplying. So, um, anyway, and I don't think we have any applicants for transportation. So, and they have some quorum issues and maybe just some clarity around their meeting time scheduling, which, um, I want to make sure to emphasize the importance just generally of clear communication between the liaisons, um, and whether it's council. And I don't, I mean, we all have to be responsible for knowing when meetings are, but if we are expecting to get an invitation and then we, one doesn't come, there might be some confusion that occurs. So however, that may need to be just someone double-checking to make sure that whoever the staff or their staff support admin person who's supposed to be sending the council representative a reminder email. And I know it's, I mean, staff is changing at times and then the council representative changes. So it is a bit of a moving target, but, um, I, I have heard a couple of instances where people didn't know that they were, there was a meeting. Um, and they were supposed to be there. So that is, and new, new members. I've heard that reported. Um, there was a new member, a recent appointee to TAB who didn't, wasn't given the updated, you know, they weren't added to the email list. Anyway, those are just, you know, basically administrative details. As far as functionality of TAB, they're, um, they meet every other month. And so I think that might lead to some of the inability to, for people to remember meetings or get that on their calendar. So they had some, some quorum issues. So I'll just read their challenges, um, communicating to those citizens who come seeking help to resolve transportation-related issues. What the TAB's role is as an advisory body and the limits to its authority. Um, which I think is really important and back to roles and responsibilities. So each individual advisory board member, not just TAB, but needs to know what their roles and responsibilities are. But somehow that also we need to educate the public as far as what the limits of, what the advisory boards can do. Um, anyway, moving on to their specifics, Highway forty-three improvements under the authority of ODOT. Um, regularly obtaining a quorum at TAB meetings. Yeah. So, um, so for priorities for twenty-five, as the city receives more and more requests for pedestrian projects, staff understands need for projects but has little to no funding available for such projects, even small projects. Determining a funding source for the projects would be great. Wouldn't we all love that? Um, so, and I mean, if anybody has any questions, I, I don't want to read verbatim because we can all just read these reports. But anybody have any concerns, questions or input about TAB? I note that we're kind of off schedule, so trying to be brief.
Next year with a look at the pedestrian proj- project funding for pedestrian safety projects. Just go over the YAC. Unfortunately, they meet on Mondays, the third Monday, Monday, it's just the same day as council, so I haven't been able to get to one of their meetings yet. Uh, they will be coming to city council soon, uh, to present. They have a letter to us and they're going to be talking about pedestrian safety. So their report uh, just basically states that they want to take an active role engaging their peers and engaging the city and providing input and looking for direction from the council as to what they should be working on. But they have been working with Chris and Darren on waterfront vision forty-three and they, Megan did a good presentation last year on the, uh, rec center that brought us on that. So that's the YAC. We have a great group of students and I'm hoping to make it to one of the meetings. I, I, I heard they might be changing their meeting dates to not meet on the Monday. Because it always kind of reflects with city, city council. So we'll follow up on that. That's, that's right.
Um, just very briefly, we don't have a report from the utility advisory board. But, um, from my attendance at those meetings, they did have a couple of times where they had quorum issues. And, um, I think they would also appreciate a little bit more clarity. Do they just deal with drinking water or are they responsible for, you know, water, wastewater, surface water? Um, and their big challenge coming up, I think, will be the, um, limitation in our charter for the five percent increase in utilities. Whereas we might be seeing some additional increases higher than that from South Fork in the upcoming years. And so we will have a big project of community communication so that people are aware of that because we will likely have to go to the voters to ask for a larger increase.
Report. Thank you. And Councilor Baumberg.
Uh, thank you. Uh, thank you for that report of, on the UAC. I'm just curious, why is the YAC not listed in our community advisory group? Documents that we use. I'm just, I don't know. Maybe, maybe it's.
Document, well, there is a report.
I'm, I'm saying in, we have a, an Excel spreadsheet that shows all the advisory groups. And it's not listed on there. I'm just, I was using it to, as, to help me see the current vacancies. Oh, I see. I was wondering about that.
Are they self-appointed? I mean, do they appoint themselves at the school and then?
Why? And then they go through an interview and they, if you, it's basically if you show up to the interview and act engaged, you get on the board. So there's no limit to the YAC. And I, Luke has told me they have a great group. Uh, and I need to get, try to get them to change their meeting date so that I can be at the meetings. Last year, I think they did it on Tuesday. I went to them. Anyway.
It seems like generally we shouldn't have, um, I mean, we need to be mindful of our liaison assignments. Um, we shouldn't be assigned to advisories that meet simultaneously or, or at the same time or conflict with meetings that we have to attend. So I don't know how to do that. But obviously I understand student schedules can be a little bit difficult to coordinate around. So maybe that's why.
It's a new year and we'll, that's based with John and Luke on that.
And the only reason why I was asking about, uh, the membership of, of YAC is just that it's helpful to see attendance, um, and, and membership, but I'm not concerned about them.
Hey, wow. So the only other, uh, so you mentioned the utility advisory board. I think, um, there's been discussions over time, the relationship to the utility advisory board and the budget committee. Um, that's an interesting one to think about, I think.
I believe our charter specifies that we have to have a utility advisory board, so there would have to be a change there if we did something different.
That's correct. That's correct. Multitasking, that's okay. UAB is established in the charter. I think that's right. Um, the only other one that hasn't been mentioned is public safety advisory, which is listed at the top. Currently inactive. Um, it's listed in the code. I just, I'm just checking right now. It's listed in the code as a, as a group. It doesn't have a specific assignment or description in the municipal code. Um, it's been inactive. We now have police review and recommend. It's a different sort of group. I think in the past, help me out here, Longford Staff, uh, I think public safety was maybe originally looking at the new police station facility. Is that the group that was going to be that? Anyone remember? I know they've also talked about emergency management in the past. Not the same name. Okay. All right. Uh, thank you. Um, so currently inactive, does not have a mission from you. Open question about what we do about public safety advisory board. Don't have to resolve it right now before lunch. But I think it would be useful, because we have it listed in our code. Um, I was just looking at how we have it listed. Members are, there's three members listed and then says vacancy, vacancy, vacancy and vacancy. But I think those three members are now, uh, off-term too.
Council President.
In the interest of just kind of brainstorming and throwing ideas out there, um, since we did talk earlier about the work of the police review and recommend committee and how important that was to our community generally. Um, and one of the criticism adjacent comments I have heard is the opacity of the nature of that work that they're doing. And I wonder if, if we do, um, find that we want to reinstigate a public, a public safety advisory board, one of their roles could maybe be providing a place where people could bring concerns or learn about what the pub, police review and recommend committee are doing that is, uh, able to be shared with the public. It's just an idea. It's just kind of came into my mind because when, there's an unresolved issue hanging back for me where I hear people saying, well, we don't even know what the police review and recommend committee is doing. So how do we know what they're doing? And, and I understand where that comes from. And, and I understand where that comes from. There's still a trust, a regaining of trust that's happening in the community so that there might be a role that the public safety advisory could play, not the only assignment that they have, but it would be a place. Because can, at this moment, can a regular citizen attend a police review and recommend committee meeting at any point in the, in the convening of the meeting?
Two public meetings a year, so those can be attended. So the reports may make these council. But their ongoing meetings are private.
So in the translation to a person who doesn't have the bandwidth to keep track of the details of the technicalities of, well, yes, there are two meetings a year. That's effectively a barrier, I think, to public access. And I'm not, that's not a criticism. I'm just saying, and I understand why these meetings have to be closed, but still it's an unanswered, and like I said, it's an unresolved issue that I'd like to find a way to, to address, is that people don't really have a way to interact with what we're doing around police and civilian oversight, as it's often called.
I was just wondering if, if nothing else, could the city make a larger effort to advertise those two public meetings? Because people might all of a sudden have a question and they just missed a meeting and they've got to wait six months for another meeting. So if it was more publicly available to people so that they were aware of those meetings were taking place and when?
Councilor Brownberg and then we'll.
Yeah, since we do have, in fact, we have an inactive advisory board. I was just wondering if we could merge, merge the two and basically have them go into executive session when they need to be essentially private, but have otherwise public meetings.
I think that the police review and recommend committee has to be private based on the privacy concerns and legal issues.
Yes, only in executive session meet that requirement.
That's a legal question. I don't know the answer to, so.
It was a, it was an option that was looked at and not adopted by council for a couple of reasons that I'd be happy to talk about offline.
Okay.
The way the group, and just as a reminder to everyone, the police review and recommend committee is not a formal community advisory group because they are not advisory to you. Instead, they're advisory to me and to the police chief. And there were some, there were some good reasons for that. There was a public facing group option that was considered and ultimately not adopted. And really it is all related to the need for that group to review confidential information. And, and also for clarity in who actually oversees police, resolution of police matters, personnel discipline, all that kind of thing. It's in our hands, on your hands, according to charter and support to have that role. So there were also needing confidentiality, all, all kinds of things, got full of all kinds of threats. Be happy to talk some more about that.
Good.
But I do, the one word that I really did like is merger. Because I think there, there might be a role. I would suggest that clearer communication and publicity of the work that they're doing by us and maybe by them and maybe by you would maybe be the solution rather than having separate committee for it. Because I do see this committee, as I said earlier today, as a win. It's a huge win and it's a huge commitment that you and us have undertaken and we should be celebrating it rather than under it, in my view. Thank you.
Great thoughts, everybody. And appreciate all of our advisory groups. We will adjourn for lunch, then come back and talk about the legislative session and we'll have to figure out how to, the legislative session, session's going to take a while because Doug, Doug Riggs isn't here, everybody. He's out of town, but he provided a short memo. I just wanted to talk really briefly to make sure we're coalesced around a couple of ideas, priorities. Council President.
Thank you. And I just wanted to make sure that we are able to save a little time to report on our other liaison, regional liaison roles. So whenever that works and after, after lunch is fine with me.
So I guess one thing I have to thought through, how long for lunch and are we suspending the public meeting for lunch? Working through lunch, I'm just asking about broadcast and then, and I think about it.
Let's just take a 15-minute break, get, get our lunch and then we'll continue the public meeting.
Perfect. Thank you. Did you catch that? Okay.
Thank you, everybody. Pretty nice. Tired. Shit, I'm just kidding.
So they can operate safely. The locks, um, the request for the funding from the state is 11.4 million. Um, and then there is an additional seven million, oh, in addition to the seven million that's already been pledged in 2021. The Army Corps of Engineers finished their seismic upgrades this summer. We're waiting for a final report on their work. Our hope is to complete the real estate transfer over the next 24 months. The plan is to start doing preliminary inspections, permitting, and project planning and design before the transfer is complete. And, um, in addition to that information, you can see there is some just detail tables with figures and breakdown of what will be needed to happen to the locks. And hopefully it doesn't say that this timeline in here, and it's a little bit subject of course to change, but I have heard a timeline of three to five years for a goal for reopening up the locks, just to kind of give people an idea of what is a realistic consideration for the reopening time. Are there any questions about the locks or comments, information you'd like me to take back? Um, I also wanted to say that on, on these reports that I'm giving, I've recently spoken to the leadership of these, um, various agency re-commissions, et cetera, boards, and they would like to come and present too, and we'll talk about when that would work for our schedule. But having them come before council is beneficial, I think. Any questions about the locks, especially, yes, Councilor Bonger?
Transportation benefits at the table. Who is the beneficiary of these benefits?
I'm sorry, I don't even, I...
First page, you have the table, protective outcomes of reopening the locks.
Well, that's of course subject to the users. Who might that be? Um, it could be any non-
So they can operate safely. The locks, the request for the funding from the state is 11.4 million. And then there is an additional seven million, oh, in addition to the seven million that's already been pledged in 2021. The Army Corps of Engineers finished their seismic upgrades this summer. We're waiting for a final report on their work. Our hope is to complete the real estate transfer over the next 24 months. The plan is to start doing preliminary inspections, permitting, and project planning and design before the transfer is complete. And in addition to that information, you can see there is some just detail tables with figures and breakdown of what will be needed to happen to the locks. And hopefully, it doesn't say that this timeline in here, and it's a little bit subject, of course, to change, but I have heard a timeline of three to five years for a goal for reopening up the locks, just to kind of give people an idea of what is a realistic consideration for the reopening time. Are there any questions about the locks or comments, information you'd like me to take back? I also wanted to say that on these reports that I'm giving, I've recently spoken to the leadership of these various agency re- commissions, et cetera, boards, and they would like to come and present too, and we'll talk about when that would work for our schedule. But having them come before council is beneficial, I think. Any questions about the locks? Yes, Councilor Brouwer?
Transportation benefits at the table. Who is the beneficiary of these benefits?
I'm sorry, I don't even, I-
First page, you have the table, protective outcomes of reopening the locks.
Well, that's, of course, subject to the users. Who might that be? It could be any number of, whether it's private recreating citizens, it could be recreational businesses, it could be commercial concerns.
Are any of these commercial concerns in Westland?
Your guess, Councilor Brouwer, is as good as mine. I don't have any more visibility into that than anyone else would have. They're not currently, but we, if you build it, they might come. Thank you, though, for the question, Councilor Bright.
I was just gonna say, historically, that was the way to get past the falls, was through the locks. So if you were from Salem to Portland, you needed to use the locks. Now people use the highways, but there could be people that would choose to take the water route instead.
Okay. I also think this is part of the importance of this part of the agenda is it's not hard to see the linkage between this and other initiatives and irrigation. So for example, if the locks were to open and create some of these benefits, hopefully we would be able to locate some of the beneficiaries in Westland. So we're working on the waterfront vision. The waterfront vision as an act of recreation use that links to this and is, the locks become smarter. So I think some of these documented benefits are certainly, these are, many of them are private sector benefits, but hopefully we can leverage that here in town.
Thank you. And a lot of, of course, I mean, reporting out on, on all of the following agencies that I'm working with or, you know, coalitions, they're all aspirational. So the heritage area hasn't been assigned yet. The trust hasn't realized their goals yet. So we can, that's part of the importance, I think, of having these conversations. How do we shape and in, and advise their work and inform what they're doing to help us and vice versa? But that's great, a great point. So on to the Willamette Falls heritage area. Oh, no, let's do the trust is next in the packet. So what I printed up here is, it's basically a rundown straight off of their website of what their goals are. In the interest of time, I'm not, I'm not really going to go through all of them. I can, I can give you, I had a conversation with Kate, Kate Brown yesterday. So who is the current president, fairly newly hired president of the Willamette Falls Trust. And they have mostly, the main goal is site control. And of course, the trust's focus is relating at this time to an agreement that they have secured with PGE, potentially to use Moore's Island, which is of course, the, and it's not really an island, but it was created when the locks were put in. The canal for the locks created an island, and that's where the mill sits. That is, of course, recently closed. So site control is the main goal for the trust, and what that'll look like, it's unknown, and negotiations are really in their early stages as far as just having conversations. PGE owns approximately 64 acres of land that they don't need to produce power. So the potential for 64 acres, I'm not saying that the trust is trying to purchase 64 acres or anything of the kind, but the point is that there are 64 non-power plant facility acres that are currently owned by PGE that they don't necessarily need for power production. So the trust can work with the city, is interested in working with the city. So we'll, we'll be going forward and having those conversations as we go. All of this work is led and informed by tribal interests and engagement. That is the main goal of the trust. So, but there is a, currently, a bit of a complicated issue with the fact that the Grand Ron participated in the trust at one time, but is not currently participating in the trust's activities. So there's going to be some goals moving forward of trying to work with Grand Ron in addition to the other tribes that are members of the trust. And that is the Confederate tribes of Soletts, the Confederate tribes of Warm Springs, Confederate tribes of Umatilla, and the Confederate tribes of Yakima. They're currently the tribes that are sitting on the trust's board. Any questions about the trust? And again, they would like to come and present for, in front of council. I'm not sure if they're waiting until they have something more substantive to report, but that's the status of the trust. And on to the Willamette Falls and Landings Heritage Area Coalition, which is the section, final section in that packet with the fish on the cover. Again, this is straight off their website, and I'm, anybody can find it, it's not confidential information, but I just thought it might be handy to have and give you a sense of what's been going on. Most importantly, to the city, maybe in the immediate near term, is the renovation of Historic City Hall. I spoke with former mayor Russ Axelrod yesterday, who is currently the board chair of the Willamette Falls and Landings Heritage Area Coalition. And his, he has sent an email that I will forward, but he was hoping to come and also present soon. But as we know, the Historic City Hall is soon to be opening, and most of these entities would like to partner with the city in the form of obtaining funding or partnering with asking for funding regionally. So that was, I mean, that is a big question that I keep on hearing is how can the city help them raise funds? And the council can work on that generally going forward. So that's about it. And I think just going into any more detail, you know, we can do individually too, in the interest of time.
Great updates and reports. Your service on those three additional committees. City manager has a comment?
Important to note that the city is a direct financial sponsor in all three of these efforts. The city has made a multi-year commitment to the locks. So I think it's important for all of you to stay abreast of that work so that in the budget, when the budget request comes, which it will, or continued partnerships, for, you know, money side. Oh, which is the same way, there's some, there's some money from the city into that, and obviously in the, in the project, City Hall, there's a lot of state money in that one. The trust is not, is currently financially supported by the city, so just to clarify our relationship with all three of us. But these will definitely be pieces that you will, you ask to look at in the budget process. So I think one thing is also of interest to me is the amount and frequency of reporting from these groups. I'm happy to hear that they all want to come and talk to council. I think that would be great of use.
Well, the other agency, I suppose, is South Fork, and we've been doing some of that so far, so just for the information of the rest of the council. The city has its water system, and then with Oregon City, we co-own South Fork Water Board over in Oregon City, which is, which makes all the water, brings it in from the Pacoons River, makes the water, and distributes it across the Abernathy Bridge to that pipe that we've all talked about a lot, into the city water system, and then it becomes city water. So that, we buy our water from South Fork Water Board. Three, three council members from each city sit on the board of South Fork Water Board. So that's kind of the background. So they have their own, like, intake system and pipe system and facilities that have their own capital needs separate from Westland. And Councilor Bright was gonna give the report for South Fork, she used to be the CFO of Sunrise. Did you work at Sunrise too?
Yes, at the same time.
She's the water first.
So South Fork Water Board has been doing a lot of planning in the last year for some large capital projects. And as owners, basically, those are our capital projects, but it gets paid for by the fees that we pay to them for the, for the treatment of water. And they, like many water agencies in Clackamas County, spent years and years trying to keep their costs as low as possible therefore their fees, their water rates as low as possible. And South Fork for years has prided themselves on being completely cash funded, not debt funded. Well, now it's come to the point that with their water treatment plant that's over 60 years old, it has had some improvements along the way, and it is very well maintained. But there are some large capital items that are gonna be coming up. So what they have currently done is taken their previous water system master plan, and they're updating the cost of all of those things to current A dollars. They are working on a system development charges review and analysis of what the new system development charges should be, and they, then they will dive into doing a rate study. The specific impact that has on us as the city of Westland is our charter says we can raise our utility rates by five percent a year. Some of these capital improvement projects for South Fork could cause them to ask us for a greater than five percent increase, and we'll have to figure out how to do that. The other concern issue I have, it's not really a concern, but because they've been debt-free for so long, how do they re-enter the bond market or a debt market to basically spread the cost of those improvements out over the life of the project or close to it so that not just today's customers are paying for it, but it's being paid for over time? So we'll be kind of diving into those topics with South Fork. And a big component of that is communication on both the Oregon City side and the Westland side of how do we talk to our customers that we will likely have to go to at the ballot box to get them to approve a greater than five percent increase in, in their, the water portion of their utility bill?
Does Oregon City have a similar, less than five percent increase limit?
Oregon City has a three percent increase limit, so that's a challenge for them. However, they have carved off the treatment portion of, so they pay South Fork, and then they do the three percent increase on their distribution system, not on the treatment. And ours is all, ours is put together. So our five percent increase covers treatment and distribution. And that's something that we could look at. But my belief is that could cause some people's rates to increase by more than five percent, and it would still need to go to voters to make that change. Did I cover anything?
You covered it well, like a professional. Looks like you know something about the topic. I think that concludes the outside-
Water and Environmental Services?
Oh, would you like?
Yeah. So I'm also in the Water and Environmental Services Advisory Committee, and I'm also on their budget committee. So in the spring, I'll be going with the budget committee to Clackamas County to present that. They are also currently working on their system development charges, and, and so that could be, oh, Water Environmental Services is a division of Clackamas County, and they treat our wastewater. So they are working on system development charges. We will find out that out. In our charter, we actually do separate the treatment from the pipes that take the wastewater away. So any increases that they have, we can generally accommodate it. They've also done some very, very extensive long-range planning, and they try very hard, even with all of their capital projects, to keep rate increases kind of slow and steady. So they kind of stay within a five percent increase every year anyway. Another thing that Water Environmental Services provides is they provide grant funding for the sewage system improvements that will improve what they call INI, infiltration and inflow. So anytime we have a heavy rain event, if there are leaks in the pipe, then rainwater, groundwater gets into the system, and when it gets to them, they have to treat it. And so if our piping system is tighter, then they have less going in there. So they don't have to expand the plant to a great extent. So they offer, I think it's a 30% grant, so that's something in our budget process that we may want to look at. Do we have any environmental projects that would reduce INI that would qualify for that 30% contribution from Water Environmental Services?
Just curious how the system works. The water that goes into swales, does that enter the, that system or is it a separate system?
Water Environmental Services takes care of that in some of the unincorporated Clackamas County, but in the city of Westland, that's, that's us. I believe, is that correct?
That is us. Some stormwater breaks its way into sewer system, which is what we're trying to-
Avoid.
Prevent. So that the INI is infiltrant infiltration, that's water getting into sewer by sewer should. This makes the cost of all of our treatment more expensive. So the tighter our pipes are, the more we're taking on sites, better and cheaper our sewer systems.
Thank you.
All great reports from our partner agencies. At this point, we can see, know the country, we can move on to the legislative session, brief discussion about that. We have a memo from Doug Rigs that I think I sent over. Yeah, so since he couldn't be here, he just wrote a quick memo. It kind of tracks with what we talked about last year, but we're getting close to the session. At the top there, it says they will convene on January 21st, 2025, which is just a few weeks away. So it's time to start thinking about why, why we will go down to Salem, for what reasons will we go down to Salem this year? To advocate, I think you mentioned earlier, our advocacy is best in person down there. We can make a difference, and we have made a difference in the past, and we can continue to do so. So John, do you wanna, you mentioned you were gonna talk about this memo a little bit?
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. What Doug presents here is the, the basic scene setting for this next session. You can read it offline, we'll make sure you have this. But the key points here are that the revenue forecast is looking good initially, but expenses in certain areas of state costs are coming up higher than previously had thought. We've heard a lot about K-12 expenses recently, particularly their pension obligations. The state is interested in continued investment in housing and homelessness, behavioral health. And one that we've talked about a lot here is transportation. Doug's got the numbers cited here. ODA thinks it needs an additional 1.8 billion just to maintain their current work. And we talked earlier, full funding for projects in the region hasn't been identified. Combined with this, there's new leadership in the legislature, and think about almost two dozen new members. So completing the work on time will be challenging. Doug, his perennial issue is that the capital building is constantly under construction, and it's difficult to be a lobbyist. The life of a lobbyist is no longer as fun as it used to be because for some time there's been not enough building to lobby in, and that's been a bummer for him. And so what he recommends is focusing. He thinks that we will have a harder time with a broader agenda, and that we need to be specific and clear when we go down there. So here's Doug's recommendations, and remind ourselves that these are partly based on this conversation with you, whenever that was, December. So he talked to you about priorities, and this basically comes from you. The three things he advises, continued effort on tolling, focus on Highway 43, and there are some interesting ideas available out there, and supporting the locks authority, which has been a priority of Westland's through time. So, John- So jumping on, uh, the bandwagon for that LOX sponsored bill or the LOX supported bill. So these are the topics that he recommends taking on. You'll also remember that you did a discussion of a survey from League of Boarding Cities, what should city priorities be in Salem? So there are the things obviously we'll be tracking and then you can support, but Westland specific, these are his recommendations. It would be very useful, um, for me and for Doug to know whether these are the right recommendations. Uh, but also, um, making sure that you know that if these are, we may be calling on you to go down and support these, uh, these items in Salem and also in your conversations with legislators offline. So this is the list that you recommend.
Thank you. Great overview. Uh, any thoughts? I'll just say, I think that, uh, Representative Bowman from Tiger is gonna have a bill that I saw a news article about, uh, related to bringing s- uh, state highways that run through cities up to, to standards so that they can be transferred. And if there's an opportunity for us to get into that discussion and whether it's push for forty-three to get that funding or push for further studies of forty-three to prime it up for a future session. Uh, I think it's advisable that we try to pursue that path where we get significant funding uh, to bring the road up to car, to trans, to take ownership of it. Because if we're gonna, we wanna try to get things done on forty-three, it's gonna be very difficult to have to go through the state processes to even do things like putting crosswalks and doing intersection improvements. I was looking at a website recently related to the Merrill Hertz project. Uh, for that one intersection, seven million dollars is now the potential cost for one putting some bike, some protected infrastructure at the intersection. So imagine what the cost would be, the whole stretch, uh, for the city, for whatever we wanna do with actual road, uh, when we get uh, forty-three, uh, the Vision forty-three adopted. Yeah. So whether we wanna put in medians or, you know, traffic calming, bus infrastructure, so anyway. Long story short, it's advi- I think it's advisable for us to really push for that, uh, especially given legislators we have in key positions that we have relationships with. So that's my request or thing that I'd like to work on. Kevin, go ahead.
Uh, I think it's, it's obvious, but it's worth noting there's not a single crosswalk between West A and Hidden Springs. That is a very long stretch to not have a crosswalk and there is Mary S. Young on the other side of that. Um, but an idea that you had, John, a few months ago, after my trip to Astoria was maybe there are other, uh, cities who have highways that have been kind of neglected in the same way that we could partner with to kind of lobby together to get things done. So I don't know how we'd put out feelers for that. Maybe League of Cities would be the place to start that conversation, but I think we know there's no way we're the only ones in that boat.
Sure. I agree not. And I think, uh, definitely even do this bill when there's negotiations going on about who's gonna, who makes the list. I'm sure they'll be under cities partner with it. And it actually makes sense for the state because they save money in the long run. Council Bright, do you have a comment?
I was just gonna say, if there are a lot of cities, communities that want to do this, then the list gets kind of long. And if we're asking for, um, funding to, either for ODOT to bring the road up to a specific standard or funding for us to do it, then that also is a budgetary challenge for them. But yes, you're right, in the long run, it, we should save them a lot of money.
Those are excellent points. Um, starting from when I was on the Transportation Advisory Board, um, in like twenty eighteen or nineteen, um, going and asking for things about Highway forty-three, whether it was funding, going to Metro, um, going to the county anywhere, I noticed that having a well-crafted and convincing argument is very important because Westland is viewed as, rightly or wrongly, Westland is viewed as a city that doesn't need any funding help. And, and basically not a high-needs area. And I understand some of the reasons why, although, um, my point that I would make, and, and I think it would be important to develop a, a very, um, clear message that's well-crafted and, I mean, it will also be accurate, but, and focus on how Highway forty-three is an important link in a chain of transportation that that allows people to pass through this community, not, not just to the benefit of the media, community members. Um, but I think we need to include that when we do this outreach because that, that's been a challenge is the perception of Westland as not needing any help.
Excuse me. Good thoughts. You know, I was, there's a metro study on jurisdictional transfer readiness and Westland makes the list and is listed as, Westland section forty-three is listed as being like technically ready and meeting the metrics, but then it falls, it's fails in the equity metrics in that study, uh, for better or for worse. So you're correct about the perception and, uh, we do need to figure out a cohesive narrative because it is a lot of people going through, not just Westland. Any other comments on the forty-three or the legislative agenda? We can identify the LOX bill, support that. And, uh, so obviously we'll have to continue to work on the tolling. I think Doug had an idea of putting together an information sheet with some of those financial data that we uncovered to just go down every once in a while and after legislators. Uh, to keep that on their mind, inefficiencies tolling. Uh, Council Bright?
One more thing on the, um, priorities, and I'm not sure how much talk has been as what's going on in the legislative session about, um, more changes in housing. So, so Edith's handed down from the state that we'll have to comply with. Um, the objective is good, but because of the topography of our community and the way that we are not just a gridded, you know, square place, some of the, um, requirements that could come forward could be difficult for us to implement. And so I just, it would be nice to have a little bit of a say in how this goes about and at least try to avoid a one-size-fits-all, um, legislation that would require additional density in places that we couldn't really accommodate it very easily.
Good thoughts. Maybe we can add monetary and housing initiatives or something like that to our list. I'm sure Doug will be tracking that for us anyway. I've heard a talk of the model code, some, some attempt to implement some sort of model code on all, on all cities, uh, things like that. So we'll track that and make sure that we go down and advocate. So well, I hope to be able to call on everybody to go down to Salem at some point in the session. It's always a fun thing. Usually you can get about ten, fifteen minutes with each legislator, but it's enough to make an impact. Uh, Council Grown had to hand up.
Yeah, just personal history. Uh, a few days ago, I went to get my car smogged and registered. Uh, it was about two hundred and seventeen dollars to register my car. If one figures about three fifty toll on, uh, the bridge, uh, two hundred days, maybe round trip, so seven dollars a day, we're talking about fourteen hundred dollars for, uh, for tolling. My point is, yeah, by the way, the actual, uh, re-registration of my car took about five minutes. Spent about forty minutes in line waiting for that to happen, but still, it was about five minutes. So my point is collecting money through registration fees on cars is gotta be a lot cheaper than setting up a tolling infrastructure.
I think that's what we uncovered. The financials.
I think it's worth also saying, uh, that in California, it is three times as expensive as it is here to register your car for just one year. There's a lot of headroom there.
Council President, then we'll move on.
Oh, I just wanted to mention that, um, the twenty-eighth of the month is the City Day at the Capitol and, um, I'll be there and I'm already, um, planning on, it's the League of Oregon Cities sponsored, um, day. So any, any meetings and anybody else who's going, I, um, I'm happy to carpool.
Take a look at that.
I think the city's gonna lend us a car for that expedition, etc.
Sure. Okay, my least invite carpooling, uh, that is a credit to be done there.
Definitely. Uh, well, good discussion. Thank you. I just wanted to touch base with everybody because before you know it, they're gonna be in session and then it's off to the races and you never know when the bill that you're watching will come up. And so we're gonna watch the Highway forty-three for the jurisdictional transfer bill closely and tolling and housing and, uh, every, the LOX authority bill as well. Um, so now we'll move on to the Neighborhood Association year-end reports and we're gonna have to get back on schedule here.
And Neighborhood Association reports were in the packet. Kathy, is it possible to bring that part of the packet up or film? Um, I don't know if you, there's twenty-five pages of Neighborhood Association reports. I don't have in my head which ones were unsubmitted. Um, I think Kathy and Dylan are the ones who know the most about which ones are in here. Um, there's varying levels of detail, but I think they all did a, a, a pretty great job of describing what they've been up to and in most cases, how they've used the city, the city grant that goes to, uh, each Neighborhood Association. Um, globally, one of the items is definitely sort of forum and, um, uh, making, making meetings work, finding officers is a challenge in some places. I wouldn't wanna speak for the neighborhoods, but I know a couple of them have had some challenges um, with, uh, keeping interest high and finding officers to do the work. Um, maybe I'll let the reports speak for themselves. This, uh, is included on your agenda in case there are any seen here. The council would like to discuss its possible priorities. If there are items that you'd like to consider for budget, uh, all of that, um, is, is why this is on the agenda.
Thank you. I'm just taking the time to swirl through.
Yep.
Anybody have any open, opening thoughts? Or comments? Several folks wanted to talk about Neighborhood Association here today. We did receive a thoughtful public comment on the ongoing, uh, participation issues with Neighborhood Associations and raising outreach, uh, from the city. Do you have a? Council Bright?
I was going through some old photographs and stuff at my house and I found a, uh, Westland tidings from two thousand and seven that had a whole article about Neighborhood Associations and keeping people engaged and the funding of the Neighborhood Associations. I think there was a discussion at the time with council about changing, modifying everything. Um, and I also know, and I know that Council Bonington is the liaison to the Neighborhood Association Presidents. There's been some concern on that end of what if the president isn't available at the night they meet? And so maybe that could be modified. I think that's on their end, but modified to be Neighborhood Association executive committee members or something so that various people could attend those. Um, I also think it would maybe be helpful for the council to have a, uh, work session with the Neighborhood Association Presidents so that we can, you know, hear kind of what everybody is saying all in, in one place. And I do know there's been some discussion of consolidating Neighborhood Associations. And I do feel like we have quite a lot, quite a, quite a large number. And some of the Neighborhood Associations that we have have a very small number of households. And so it seems like if the Neighborhood Associations themselves were more equivalently sized, it would be easier to, um, encourage people to attend. And, and I would think that many of their issues and concerns would, would still be relevant even if you're on the far end of a, of a different neighborhood.
Agreed. Council Bonnington?
So, yeah, all of that is accurate. Uh, as the liaison, I guess I do have a, a few thoughts about the Neighborhood Associations and the President's Group. Um, they apparently will be electing a new president of the President's Group. As CJ gave the indication that he was not going to continue on in that role. Um, aside from that, I, I think it's, it's obvious and fair to say that the relationship between that group and the city itself has not always been super warm. But I'm sensing that that's very much turning around and I think that's a really nice development. It's very constructive, the conversations I've had with all of them recently. They had some really simple problems that they were struggling to communicate regarding just accessing their email. Um, which on our end was a security matter. Uh, and kind of explaining that and getting everyone on the same page has been kind of difficult. So I, um, they're gonna have their first meeting in two weeks and I asked John to attend with me. Um, because they don't have a staff liaison at all. So, uh, he was gonna come with me and I also spoke with Danielle who wanted to come with me. They actually were asking if she could be the liaison. They just really seemed to want more interaction from city staff. Um, and I think we can, we can do something by showing up at the first meeting and taking them very seriously and kind of identifying what their expectations are of us and what we can help them with. But
Perhaps submission statement.
Well, yeah, to a certain extent. I mean, if, if you think about it back before the internet, they were really the key to communicating with individuals. Now we can do that more directly. So what is their main function besides the land use hearings? Um, how can we, how can we utilize them to build community?
Oh, hi. President of Neighborhood Association Presidents is just coming in. See, Mr. Cole, would you like to make a comment?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll give, we'll give you a few minutes. No pressure.
What a perfect time.
Well, the question that I have associations and potential consolidation with, uh, in this committee, I would just, like, how do we? I wanna make sure that Neighborhood Associations themselves are involved. And I don't wanna take actions as council, but like, you know, could kind of, I'd like it to be a collaborative process to determine how to increase engagement and whether there's consolidation, there's any consolidation that, that happened because of lack of membership or lack of participation. And I can see the benefits of it, but I also wanna make sure that I can see the downsides of it. So, um, that's an open question in my mind. It's like, how do we get that collaboration on the front end for some of these conversations? Anyway, just wanna throw that out there. Council President had her hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and thank you, Council Bonnington, for that input. And I would agree, I, definitely everything we do with regard to Neighborhood Associations, I think the most, some of the most important aspects of it need to be leading with collaboration and transparency. Um, I know for sure that there's no one on council who has any kind of a bad faith agenda with regard to Neighborhood Associations. But sometimes if we've made a decision that doesn't feel like it was done openly or with engagement um, and transparency, it can be potentially perceived as a threat. I mean, just to maybe use an over-stated term, but I, I felt that way sometimes that that was the perception. Um, so being transparent, being engaging and collaborative, but also being fair. So being transparent, being engaging and collaborative, but also being fair and standard, I, I feel like some of the, some of what would be considered a logical step would be to evaluate, as you pointed out, sizes of neighborhoods. I can't remember who said it, but why would there be a Neighborhood Association, for instance, who is getting the same amount of stipend as, that has only a hundred homes in it as a Neighborhood Association with five hundred homes in it, let's just say. So as far as just from fairness standpoint, that seems like a logical way to be framing some of this analysis and also just asking neighborhoods, like you're saying collaboratively, how are you doing? Are you having forum issues or maybe a neighborhood that's not even meeting anymore? So using those kind of tools, I think will help a lot, but it is important and, and maybe a good opportunity to also engage new potential people who don't even know Neighborhood Associations exist. So education is part of it.
Think we should give credit to the Sunset Neighborhood Association who this year started themselves back up and it's been a really fun couple of meetings to attend. Councilor Grunner's been in them with me each of them and yeah, it's, it's a great atmosphere. I really have enjoyed being part of that.
That's awesome.
You also put out signs on the street advertising maybe something.
Cool. The reports said they had an increased participation. Oh, that's great. Sorry. I saw CJ gave his card to give a public comment. Thanks for being here on a Saturday.
You're welcome. Hi, everybody. Thanks for being here. Thanks for your opportunity to make a public comment. I've been listening for about the last hour, trying to figure out when I could quickly drop by to get here to then be able to get back to my house. So thank you very much for having this streamed in multiple locations. That's much appreciated. This sound has been, was iffy on YouTube at one point, so it was okay. I know how to navigate back to WebEx. All right. Annual reports, I read through all of them between last night and today and there's some comments, common comments. Much of it comes with how we work with you guys to help benefit the council and the city. I appreciate everything that Councilor Baumgartner just said about, like, we want to work. So it's a matter of how do we continue to work together? As Kevin alluded to, I'm trying to step back from some of these roles because I hold a lot of hats right now and I'm trying to give those hats. So the next NAP meeting is scheduled for January. That may be moved to February due to some proposals, so I will be in touch with Councilor Bonnington and City Manager Williams about that. So in terms of NAs, really it's about engagement and how the council and the city can promote the NAs and how the NAs can then show our support in doing some lifting for you, right? If there's things at that we can go to our neighbors to help you out with, or if it's like, hey, we need to contact legislators, legislators on your behalf to help with legislative session coming up. We're happy to do that and I've heard that from many of our fellow NAP members. We want to make this city the best place possible. That's why we exist. As you alluded to, one Neighborhood Association is having trouble fielding a board. It's not a lifetime sentence and so trying to find more people to take on those leadership roles has been a challenge. So I think one way that council and the city can help us is how do we plan for succession? How do we plan in building capacity in our individuals? It was something that the NAP was working on before, trying to build this workshop type program. It was dropped this past year in our discussions and I think I will make sure to bring that back up because I think we also need to build capacity. To the size of Neighborhood Associations, my understanding is that the grant is distributed based on population within the Neighborhood Associations, not based on Neighborhood Associations. So if there is, I'm not saying that we want to consolidate, but if there is the opportunity and the neighborhoods want that in order to be able to function, have representation, as long as that standard of population determining the NA grant policy, I think that's a good way to still go. I guess if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer those questions. Else I will cede the rest of my time.
What did the product today was?
The potential for a joint meeting with the Neighborhood Presidents Group, do you think that would be something that would help each team pick out council and the Neighborhood Presidents Group to kind of kick off and enhance collaboration kind of thing?
I don't think we would necessarily be opposed to it. There are technically eleven Neighborhood Associations, so that could be eleven presidents or their designee. I don't know if all eleven would, because two are currently not active and I'm not sure how many of those other nine would attend, but it's certainly something that I can bring up at a meeting to ask about.
Just had, yeah, just trying to figure out ways to increase the collaboration, at least start the conversation, start conversations. We do want to work with the Neighborhood Associations more than we have and they do have an important role. Like, how do we increase engagement? What do you all think?
Yeah.
Question. I don't.
And you can put things in the newsletter. So in Hidden Springs, which I represent, we have a popu, a population, I believe, of close to a thousand households, I think. Maybe it's a little more than that, under two thousand. We get ten people to show up, twelve people to show up, and that represents probably seven or eight households out of that many, right? So we're talking less than point one percent of people engaged. So I think it really comes back to a common theme that I saw within the agenda items and here is like, how do you get more people to have a willingness to have input? And I think as you write your goals for the year, making sure there's a specific point to the Neighborhood Associations because last year's goals had zero reference. So we're, and well, again, we're here to collaborate. I took time out of my day to make sure that that was heard, but we want to collaborate with you guys. So.
Go ahead, Council President. Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, thank you so much for coming by and I just have to say that CJ has a really busy life and I just really am grateful that you take the time and you care a lot about the community. So I just really appreciate you. What, do you have any opinion on how best to go about? If it isn't, for instance, a meeting with Neighborhood Association Presidents? I mean, and I don't mean to put you on the spot because, just because you came to sit here. That's not really fair, but if you've seen or thought of any ideas or something that comes to mind.
Yeah, so in last, I don't, was it two days ago on when, sorry, John, I don't know what anyone referred to. That three presidents met with you and some city staff about collaboration. I think that's one way. I think having Kevin or someone, Councilor Bonnington or one of the other ones who you present at the NAP meeting and making sure that's being brought back and discussed here is a good way to have input. I think the idea of getting us all into a room, whether it's for a formal meeting or just a quick meet and greet and discuss time, right? So I don't know, in terms of public forums, how you would make, how that happens, right? But I think there's the opportunity to just start building those strong relationships because each of us has a same number of minutes every year to give to whatever, whatever we choose to give it to and I think you'll find there's a lot of people willing to give more time if we're aligned in our vision going forward.
Thank you. That's really helpful.
I had noticed. But not at all. One thing that I think would be of interest to me and staff is also having having a clear idea of what things should go to NAP and what things should go to Neighborhoods, right? Is there help us to clarify what the role of NAP is, which topics and projects or issues, or just like everything should go to both? And you don't have to answer that on the spot, but I think it would be useful for us to think through. Since the NAP, to my understanding, doesn't have a formal designation in the city's codes. It's a, it's a sort of self-organized group. It's useful for us now. What do you, what do you think would be useful there? What things fall into specific meetings? So we don't make that's useful time.
So fortunately, that's been something we've talked a fair amount about. The original formation of the NAP was back when there was a council that wasn't very supportive of the Neighborhood Associations and so they got together to figure out what problems they were having in order to advocate together. Right? So that was the original formation based on my understanding of that group. As we move forward into what the NAP can be useful for, I think there's a balance between what you predict at the NAP for like citywide projects like Vision 43 or Waterfront Project. It's very clear to me that those two things impact the whole city, while at the same time, they predominantly impact the neighborhoods that surround them. So do you need to go to Stona to talk about Vision 43 individually? Maybe not. Right? I don't know. I'm not trying to speak, I'm not totally comfortable speaking on behalf of everybody at this point, but the idea to me would be that NAP is important for sharing information of what's happening to create common ground. It's part of the reason like, hey, the email issue, like we found out that multiple people are having issues with email at one of the NAP meetings, which then allowed Councilor Bonnington to come and advocate on our behalf to solve a problem. Right? So if there's something that, to me, that makes sense for the whole set of Neighborhoods to know, I think the NAP is the right avenue for that. And then offer to, offering to the individual NAs that are adjacent to these projects where these projects are happening to have a presentation at their NAs, I think is important for community engagement. Because my view is that as a president, I need to take that back to my Neighborhood Association and say, this is where we are on these things. Did that help?
I think it, it's just a simple rule of social interaction that if you have a positive atmosphere, a really happy, productive, constructive sort of meeting, you're gonna attract a lot of people. But if the meeting is a lot of anger and chaos and infighting, you're probably gonna have trouble getting forums. And this is obviously not something you influence, but there are several very, very good cultures at, at some NAs and then there are a couple that are pretty hostile to each other and I can understand why people don't necessarily want to show up to just be angry. Like they might want to show up to get to know each other and build community and be happy. Yes, it's the sixties now.
More music.
Well. For CJ or he sent back to his family, maybe a soccer match if he's, no, not today. Thanks for coming. Yeah, thank you guys for sharing some thoughts. We'll be in touch and we should do the best if you end up stepping away from Hidden Springs, but what a huge loss to your neighborhood.
Hopefully you'll stay involved. I plan to stay involved, but I appreciate you all, appreciate you all for the time that you give to the city as elected officials and as city staff.
Well. How should we, how, since anybody have any ideas for how to bookend the Neighborhood Association conversation for today? Or we can, it's, I would say we can continue to discuss as well. Council President, have?
I just had a quick thought of, in the spirit of continuing with collaboration, asking Neighborhood Associations how we can help them get some input from them first, at least, and I do think, without making them feel that we're putting it all on their shoulders, so make sure that we make it clear that this is not just another task we're giving them to fix themselves. We're asking how we can help them.
Good on you. Go ahead. I think probably the best way to go about it is to have that first initial Presidents Group meeting and you will be there. You were invited. Yes, and I think anyone else on staff who is willing and interested should come too, just to build those relationships with them also. They have a point of contact for a certain thing. Although not everyone, obviously, not all hundred and forty people or whatever. And also if any of you would like to come to that meeting, we could coordinate that as well. At that point, it might get into being a joint meeting, but yeah, we should avoid that.
Well, it's kind of a generalist organization and I'm the city's most general generalist.
Yes, you're right.
So it's a good venue probably for me to be there more frequently and I think this could be you know, it's, in some cases it could be, hey, we're working on the waterfront vision and NAs that want more information. Everyone gets the initial level overview. Similarly, we're gonna come better, that's awesome, because we should have our public works communication or public works prior project list for the year worked up by then, if you come and introduce that. So I think there's a bunch of, I think there's a bunch of great avenues here and I, I am thinking ask the City Manager, what's the Neighborhood Association? How do I get involved? So just, you know, trying to, trying to support that and I really like the idea of us thinking more about how the memberships of the NAs could, I like that, I like that idea of get out our legislative priorities to Neighborhood Associations and maybe those folks have relationships with legislators. That's, that would be super useful and make us all feel like we're running the same direction. I really like that a lot.
Yeah. Councilor, right, go ahead.
I think that, I think a video on Neighborhood Associations would be a good thing. There are a lot of people that are newer to the community that don't know what the Neighborhood Associations are. They don't know which Neighborhood Association they live in. And yes, the Neighborhood Associations put out signs that say there's a meeting coming up, but if people don't know what a Neighborhood Association is, then they don't know that they're actually welcome and invited to that meeting.
Thank you. That's a great point and I'm just sitting here, my mind is just like firing with all the different possibilities that we can, we can do, so I'll, I'll try to be concise, but I, one of the first things I thought of was, well, when, when do people engage? Well, people engage when they have a mission like tolling and so engaging, giving people that an opportunity to engage and also communicating what's important. So if we could, we should all be going to our own Neighborhood Associations. I say that because I don't often, I don't always make it to mine, but I, we represent four different neighborhoods, I think. Oh, no, you're not in the Lamont anymore. Okay, so are we?
We're the same one.
Oh, okay. Well, anyway, so we've got about almost half of them anyway. So we should be going and we should be communicating and, and there should probably be somebody from the city at all the Neighborhood Associations meetings, not the city staff, but I mean councilors or somebody, you know, on a day, for instance, when you're gonna come to one of the neighborhoods, then maybe that's a day that someone who was gonna go there doesn't need to be there, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Just communicate and, and then just communicate needs, like you're saying, what, what's an opportunity? Here's, here's an upcoming legislative session, who, and here's some of the things that are gonna impact our community that people could contact their legislator on. I think that giving people an actual task, but the biggest thing is getting people there, as CJ points out. And as a former board member of a big Neighborhood Association, we rarely had more than eight people at a meeting at, for, at Lamont until they started building the school on Dollar Street and so if there's a, an event happening, people will come, but otherwise people are busy.
So I think it would be awesome if we gathered all that information at this meeting, if it's in February and had these conversations with each president and then kind of came back and talked about what we should do, that once we have that information to better work with.
Agreed. This was a great discussion today. Go ahead.
So the school closures is another issue that's currently impacting. So the school closures is another issue that's currently impacting people in our community. Or at least concerning them. We don't know who it's, who is or may be impacted eventually, but. Um, so. There's an opportunity to engage with the community, um. When I was talking to councillor, Metro Councillor Lewis, she mentioned the city's role in potentially providing. Um, more housing choices so that we can get more young families in to our neighborhoods to. Be able to enroll in the schools and then they wouldn't have enrollment issues. And so we all have a role to play and if we keep on talking to the neighborhoods and. Getting people involved and influencing, you know, whether it's a long range planning or a immediate term safety. Transportation or crosswalk issue, pedestrian issue. There are opportunities to engage and we just, I think it's maybe on us to offer them. To people in a way that they can access it. People are busy and that's really important.
Great. Um, so uh, before we move on, um. So start with the neighborhood association president's discussion. Uh, we'll focus internally on communicating early and often. We've heard that from the. That's a work in progress for us. Um, come back to council after we engage with the N A P's and. Um, we'll work on attendance amongst those of us at the table and we have staff that go to a variety of N A's all the time. So some sort of coordination and I'm just making sure we're hitting everyone and communicating more openly and earlier. I think it'd be a great start. A lot of the, a lot of the rocky places we've had have been more about the how than the what. Uh, and so we work with them on how we do things.
Thank you. Great summary of the issues and I also liked the idea of sending out an email from maybe myself to the neighborhoods. You know, we can write it together saying, you know, how can we help you? Or how can we, you know, figure out some way to say, we wanna collaborate, how do you see it as a path to increase collaboration with the city? And even sending out the legislative priorities, you know, call to action. We need to get Highway Forty Three included in this amendment to the bill for jurisdictional transfer money.
Yeah.
Just write your legislative, some, you know, when times come.
Well, it was always my intention to take a uh. To talk about what happened today at, when we went to that next N A P meeting and I think that's a great early, here's what council's thinking about for this year. How can we work on all these pieces together, so.
We'll get to your short list.
Yes, I know.
We should not forget what we discussed about this, which was uh utilizing them for kind of disaster preparedness. On a more localized scale, because if something pretty bad happens. Gonna need to be like block by block organization to, to get through that and this is exactly the way to do that. Well. We will. Close that discussion for now and move on to. Next item, which is city manager's big responsibility, the budget.
Yes, uh, thank you. Um, do you need to find a minute break? Are you good?
You can take a five minute break real quick if you just.
Okay, we'll get, uh, we'll get.
We're gonna take a two oh five, we'll be back in just five minutes. Uh, and the next item is a budget presentation because this is a budget year. We go into twenty twenty five, so I'll turn it over to John and Lauren.
Thank you.
To Mayor.
Been a great discussion so far. We've talked about a lot of things of uh real importance to the council where all of this gets. Implemented and adopted is in the budget. And um, it is one of our main responsibilities, as you all know. And many of the things that we've talked about already through the day will get um considered and discussed further in the budget. Um, I asked Lauren to put together some initial thoughts from a six month out perspective. Uh, that wasn't listed earlier, uh, but uh, from this perspective, what do we know about the budget? What will the timeline look like? And uh, make them to be have your direction as to how the process works and what level of involvement. So uh, Lauren, even though this is a city manager responsibility, like making a responsibility something else does it?
Perfect.
Staff doing an amazing job of coordinating our budget and um. Take it away.
Awesome, thank you. So as John mentioned, we are six months out um, from when the budget needs to be adopted. And that is actually really early, even though it sounds pretty close, it's really hard to get um. A good grasp on what we're gonna need, especially for a two year biennium. So we've been working really hard on that. Um, we actually just kind of started over the last couple of weeks and have been putting together line item budgets. Um, but I wanna say that today, I don't think that any decisions should be even. Really made here. It's, it's more that we wanna have the ideas, but we won't know for another. Month or two, um, what our budget is really looking like and so I don't wanna say, oh, we're gonna have. Extra money or we're not gonna have money at this point because we really don't know based off of a lot of different factors and so. Um, there's still a lot more information that needs to be had before we can make these decisions, so it's more of just information at this point, so. Um. There we go. Um, so I, I put our budget calendar in here, um, and this is what goes in our budget document. Um, so it's kind of just a little bit more general. Uh, we, as I mentioned, started developing our preliminary budget goals. Um, November, December and January of the year. Um, and we're gonna be starting to hold some informal department. Uh, meetings and talk to each department about their line item budgets and where they're at, their goals, um, what they think. Is gonna be happening over the next couple of years. Um, obviously today we are, the city council's establishing goals. Um, and then January or February or March, we're probably gonna have some good uh budget drafts prepared. And we'll be going over those again with the departments. So after we put it all together, we'll look at it again and say, here's where we're at. Here's where we think we need to cut or, you know, we can add that thing that you wanted. Um. And then in April, we'll do the final review of the budget uh and do all of our advertisements that are necessary. There's. A bunch of advertisements necessary and then we plan on having our um budget committee meetings in May. So that's generally when we, when we do it. Um, and, and then in the budget committee will. Approve the budget in May hopefully, um, and then in June, the council will need to adopt the budget. Um, also at that time, we will have a supplemental budget for the current biennium that we're in, so anything that we. Um, had or looked like we're gonna have over expenditures in certain line items or if we need to just transfer. Money from one department to another department, which is more likely the case in a lot of these situations, um, we'll do that during that time. We'll also be looking at our tax rates, our master fees and charges and everything like that during that time, so. There we go. Um, second year of biennium, so that's the year that we're in currently for the last biennium. Um. This is more just that John and I go through the budgets and see where we're at, uh, what happened over the last year and some of that is what we're doing right now. Um, we're going over and seeing what happened last year, what happened the year before, because it was just an estimate during the last bi- biennium. And then what we think is gonna happen this current year. Um, updating C I P if we need to and just making any general changes. And again, passing a supplemental budget resolution. Are there any questions about the calendar, the timeline? Um, so I wanted to put some new or noteworthy items up here, just things that are a little different or. Um, or new in general for this biennium. So we've talked about this many times. We are, this year, this biennium, we are going to consolidate um a few of our funds into the general fund. So we're moving the parks fund, public safety fund, library fund and planning funds into the general fund. And they will be shown as individual departments. So actually, um. While it's moving it into the general fund, it actually shows more detail than when it's on its own. So it's a little bit more transparent. Because you get to see a little bit more of the detail of what the departments are spending. Um, and also this is gonna be a lot easier for budgeting purposes after this biennium. Um, because we will be able to put all of our property taxes in one fund instead of trying to split all of our. Um, all of our general revenues in one fund instead of trying to split it and match the expenses and transfer back and forth. It just makes it a lot easier. Um, and this is what most of our neighboring cities do with their budgets, um, if not all. Um, the Westland redevelopment agency budget, we adopted our first budget last spring. Um, or early summer and that was just for one year, which is the current year we're in for this year twenty five. We're gonna move that to a biennial budget and align it with the biennial budget for the city. So as you all know, it will be separate budget meetings, but it will be the same committee, um, and the same. And the same thing for council, you'll be, you're on the board of that, so we'll be doing likely the same day, we'll just adjourn our city budget. Meetings and then open the Westland redevelopment agency budget. Um, performance measures, we are continuously um updating these performance measures. And over the last biennium and especially this biennium, I really want the department heads to be looking at these or the managers to be looking at these. Making sure they tied it to the council goals, making sure they tied our D I B measures, um, and just making sure that they're actually meaningful. Um, there are some requirements that we have to have certain types of performance measures in our budget for the G F O A award. But otherwise, I really want them to be meaningful to, to the uh, to the residents of Westland and to you all. So that you know what's going on.
Can you give some examples of performance measures?
Um, a lot of times the performance measures are specific to the departments and so, um, like for a finance one, it's. You know, how many audits we um, we, how many comments we got on our audit or if we had audits without. Any findings, whatnot. Um, for police, it might be how many traffic stops, how many arrests, how many D I. Or how many um, D U I's that they had. So things like that, um, but. There are things that we can connect to the specific goals like sustainability or, you know, how we. How we move something to paperless or whatnot, so.
And there hasn't been, I feel we shouldn't be. For a while. Some of them are very activity based, as Lauren said. Well, there's a lot of things that go into how we both check out or how many traffic stops we made. It may be that you actually want fewer traffic stops and more, depending on. You know, so I think numbers are one thing and explanation of numbers is another thing. Um, we. I'm really interested in making them useful, which Lauren already said, that to council and community and understanding. Not just the what, but the. It's the, the why. Why is this number like this? Why is it, why are we recording it? Um, and I think it would be really helpful to have the budget community council weigh in on that and receive what we're doing and. And help us with this, to make it relevant. And these are department oriented rather than individual oriented?
Yes, yes, very much so.
Thank you. We have a couple of departments of one.
Yes. We love those departments of one. It's very awkward for those people in those departments of one. Yes, right? Um, the last thing I have on this slide is our investment policy. Um, we have not updated our investment policy since two thousand and nine. And really, there has been no need for it. Um, we invest in the local government investment pool and. That's a very secure investment pool, I think you all know about this, and we have invested in them all of our money that we have extra. Um, well, since before two thousand and nine. And they have a maximum amount in the L G I P and we've never even been close to hitting that until this year. And so because we have. Um, some extra money that we're still paying, you know, we're still using the two thousand and eighteen bond funds. We have the money from the O dot water line, um, and also just general revenues that are in reserves that we've been reserving over time. We have, um, we've hit our max and what that means is that we need to go outside the L G I P and start investing. It's not reasonable for us to keep millions of dollars in our checking accounts. It's just not doing anything for us as a city. Um, so we have hired an uh, some advisors, government portfolio advisors. And they're helping us currently rewrite our investment policy. We actually just sent it to the Oregon Short Term Fund Board. Um, they are the ones who look at the policies and um, they don't necessarily have a say and if it's. Um, if it, they'll give you comments on it, but they're not, they're not the authority on it. So they're gonna give us comments and then we will. Bring that policy um, back to council and council will have the authority to approve. Or make changes to that policy before they approve.
With those investments, um. We had discussed land banking, uh, as part of Vision Forty Three. Does real estate qualify as an investment that we can be involved in?
You know, that will all be in the policy and determine like what types of investments, so really it's, um. I believe so, but it, it's really, there's a bunch of different um requirements for governments and um, basically. Making secure investments that, and also it's not necessarily me or John deciding on what we're investing in. We can. As the council, you can have some say of like, hey, we would really like to invest in these types of companies or we really not like to invest in these types of companies. And that's fine, but realistically, um, our advisors are gonna be telling us like. Based off of your portfolio, based off of your goals, based off of your liquidity and how much, when you need the money and how. Um, and like our long for term forecast, they're gonna be making the recommendations to us to say. You should invest in this and this is how long we're gonna have you invest to make sure we're meeting all of our goals. Um. What's, with um, that being said, our last year's investment income was very high. Um, we really haven't. Seen a lot of investment income. We netted with our bank charges, um, and so usually it's come out to be pretty close to even. Um, maybe a little bit of investment income, um, and historically, we haven't budgeted that much for investment income. So when you see that our fund balances are a pretty good amount higher than what we originally expected. It's, a lot of it is because we, we did get a lot more um earnings from the L G I P. The return was high. Um, and plus we had higher balances. So that's really great. That is uh, good revenue for us. Um, I don't necessarily expect it to stay at that level. The interest rates were very good and um. And our balances were high, so I don't necessarily expect that it's gonna stay that way forever, but hopefully we can continue to get some. Good investment or income and, and keep going that way. Um, so this is a slide I wrote about our budget assumptions and known costs. Um, the first one is our PERS rates, uh, which everyone loves to talk about. Uh, this has been in the news a lot with the school districts, as someone mentioned earlier. Um, but we got our PERS rates and fortunately, we know what our PERS rates are for the next biennium. Um, we find those out in generally around October of the previous year, which is great. Um. The not so great news is that the increases are a lot higher than what we had originally anticipated. The PERS board adopted some new assumptions and those led to pretty high increases. In addition to that, their returns were nowhere near what they had expected their returns to be, which again. Caused the rates to go up significantly. Um, so we were expecting in our previous budget, we had. Um, projected our rates to go up this biennium by three percentage points. And our actual increases were between two point nine one and four point three percentage points, which is an. Overall percentage increase of twelve point seven to twenty point two nine percent. So that's a pretty big percentage increase um, over the prior year. Um, and I put up there, you can see that um, our largest group of employees, so about sixty percent of our employees are in the. Ops or general service and that's the one that had the largest increase, so that had, or the largest percentage increase, I should say. Um, so while it only went up three point eight percentage points, the percentage increase is o- over twenty percent increase. Over the prior year, so that's gonna be interesting to look at in our budget and see how much that affects it. Um, as you all know, personnel is our largest expense here, so. All the next uh, increase is pretty, pretty high. Um, city insurance, um, we generally meet with our insurance agency every year. Our, our insurance um broker every year in the spring. Um, he has actually reached out earlier and said that he would like to meet in the, the next couple of weeks and so I'll be meeting with him soon, John, myself. Um, and I kind of expect that that's because we're gonna have abnormally high increases. Um, nothing that has to do with us as a city, um, in general, it's just, it's the market right now. We've been having increases about fifteen to twenty two percent um, for the last few years. And so I'm expecting that the range is gonna be within that too, hopefully not more than that. expecting that the range is gonna be within that too, hopefully not more than that, but again, another pretty large increase. Um, cost of living, we know what our cost of living investments are for ACME Management for the biennium, we negotiated those contracts recently and have those numbers. We're gonna use the assumptions that our CCPA union and our sergeants are gonna be consistent with the other groups. That won't be known until probably after we're pretty much complete with the budget, um, and so, it will be bargaining along, um, during the same time. So, we'll just use the same numbers for CCPA and sergeants. Lastly, um, medical and dental premiums, um, the cost increases there are for, uh, 1125, so, uh, starting this week, um, and they were higher than expected. We have had a lot of years where they didn't increase much, or very, um, small increases, and now they are recovering, all the insurance companies were recovering from COVID, and they are turning around and making pretty large increases, and expect to continue those levels of increases. So, as you can see, our, um, CIS regents, uh, premiums went up 9.2%, um, it was a 9.2% increase, um, and then we have, all the way down to, our Kaiser Dental went down a little bit, which was odd, but, uh, not as many employees are in that program anyways, and it's dental, so it's a lot less of the cost. Um, but the other ones went up, you know, five and a half, eight, 8.3 and 9.2, so those are pretty big jumps there. Um, I, I'm putting revenue options up here, we've talked about these many times over the years. As I said, I don't wanna make any decisions necessarily today, we don't know if we're necessarily gonna need these, but I think it's definitely something that we need to continue to talk about and keep on our radar. Um, some of them, even though we might not need them, the council might wanna go forward with them, um, but these are just up here as reminders of what, um, options we have to increase in our revenues. Um, so, as we've talked about many times, repealing marijuana ban, um, we think that just repealing the ban would give us about 40,000 a year for our per capita, um, portion of the revenues, and in addition, if we had any distributors, it would be about 50 to 60,000 extra per distributor, um, a year. So, that's a pretty good revenue source, and, um, I know council has talked about that many times, so. Uh, operating levy, that, this is a Oregon law that allows for a local option levy with approver, approval of the voters, um, and it would need to be renewed every five years, uh, it's computed as a rate per dollar, assess value, this is an option if we have, um, a shortfall, and we really need to make that board somewhere. Uh, new fees, um, in the past, the council has discussed the potential of new fees, like a public safety fee, or, um, anything that would be charged on the city services bill, um, and the fee for the public safeties, we would, it would be to either increase, um, public safety operations, or to pay for current portion of the operations, so, or both. Master fees and charges, um, over the last few years, we've been doing across the board increases because our costs have been going up, so we are trying to match our revenues as much as we can with that. Um, one of the other areas this year that we'll be looking at is park maintenance fee, and making sure that it covers the expenditures of park maintenance. Um, we have the potential of, um, we're talking about the new operation center, and parks, um, would be responsible at this point for one-fifth of that, and so, we would wanna be looking at if parks, if our parks maintenance fee would need to help cover a little bit of that cost, if possible, and if allowable. Um, currently working on a right-of-way code, um, and revising it, so that will be coming to council, um, in the next few months, and once we have that revised, um, it also goes along with our fees and charges, we will start auditor, auditing the operators in the right-of-way, hopefully finding some that are in our right-of-way that are not paying us, and can collect a little bit more revenue on that. Um, and so, we have that, and then also, down the line, long ways, you know, potential for future discussions of charging our own utilities in the right-of-way, um, but I think that's a much further down the line question.
Just, uh, very generally, who is that masterpiece, no, I'm sorry, right, right-of-way, um, change likely to affect, if we did that?
So, that would be companies like PGE, um, Northwest Natural, um, Telecom, anyone who's in our, using our right-of-ways. Um, and this code doesn't necessarily impact them right now, it's more over the long term. A lot of them have franchise agreements that don't expire for a number of years, um, but this is implementing our right-of-way code, which we've actually already, we've already made changes to it, this is just additional changes to make it, um, more up to compliance and more robust.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Uh, issues and options, um, we have historically funded Main Street, these are, these are items that in the past we funded, um, they're always something that we ask about throughout the budget cycle, and how much we're gonna continue to fund these organizations. Um, we funded Main Street 60,000 last year and 40,000 this year, um, the question was amount to move forward, we got a proposal from Main Street yesterday, um, requesting 70,000 per year of biennium.
Cool. Sorry, you have a question? Is that the same email we got to this morning? Did, did you see that, John? I, I wanted to talk about it at some point, but not right now, we're in the middle of presentation, but.
Yeah, this is the.
Since it's Main Street, that reminded me I wanted to talk about.
Yeah, the request for operating grant, yeah, request for operating grant support for the 28.
It did come in yesterday.
Okay. Um, Columbia Land Trust, um, Backyard Habitat, uh, the current biennium, we've been funding them about $9,000 a year, and they are asking for, um, approximately 15,000 for the next two years. I think that's per year, and I can't remember off the top of my head, but I think that's per year. Do you remember that, John, if that was? Yeah. Sorry, that was, that right, uh, sentence wasn't forwarded. Um, community grants currently at 25,000 per year, that's historically what we've done for a number of years, um, so, again, just a question if we're gonna continue that at that level. Uh, neighborhood association stipends currently at $20,000 per, per year. Uh, Willamette Falls Locks Authority, um, the current biennium that we're in had 25,000 budgeted, um, and we did 15,000 of that last year, we'll do 10,000 of that this year, and then determine on if we're gonna continue on, and then just if there are any other items that any of you would like to talk about, I'm, to hear about those, and, and that's all that I have.
So, I think this would be a great opportunity to give us early heads-up about things you might be interested in knowing more about, um, topics that Lauren's covered, or you might wanna talk more about, uh, in the coming months. While it's no action needed, we'll keep going on the timeline with Lauren's lead-up, but, um, the ball does start rolling, and it's still rolling pretty fast, isn't it?
Um, thank you, and thank you so much, Director Radhak for this presentation. Um, I do wanna mention at some point, so that, and I'm just opening this topic up for discussion, and it relates to our neighborhood associations, um, and Main Street, and specifically that Willamette Neighborhood Association has expressed concern that they are feeling overburdened by needing to subsidize Main Street activities to a greater degree than other neighborhoods are, because Main Street is, happens to be located in the Willamette neighborhood. So, I wanted to talk about neighborhood stipends generally, um, and in our discussion about neighborhood associations, I certainly am not questioning that they deserve to have some funding at all, but just how that's done, and make sure it's fair, and, um, talk about Main Street, which does important work for the whole entire community, very worthwhile, um, endeavor to fund, but how best to do that? So, at some point, I'd love to talk about that, not necessarily right now.
Absolutely.
Raising that? Any other comments? Mention, a couple things I had written down as taxing financing, uh, for 43, the feasibility study, I don't know if that's, is it programmed into the next budget, or the current budget, or what the timeline is on that?
So, are you talking about, uh, programming money for the consultant to do that work, or?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not sure, John, the status of that, was that kind of a waiting for council's direction, or?
Um, yes, we, that is, sorry, um, timeline-wise, I think it might be funds that be expended after the life first, but some council discussion on whether it's a project that you'd like to move forward. Um, we know that folks have varying opinions about taxing financing, so we wanna make sure that you're directing this to happen or not happen. Um, the feasibility study is a pretty innocent first step, so that everyone could understand what it, what is, and what the district may or may not be able to produce.
That's council right.
When we met with the, um, historic review board, they talked about a, um, consultant and a grant that would require some matching funds, and I think it was about $15,000, but I don't know if that's on, on your radar, and it was, it, it seemed worthwhile to me, but, it, you know, obviously takes some resources.
So, they would provide a grant to, to the city, then?
Yeah, they're looking for a grant, but it has matching fund requirements.
Oh, okay.
And then the other thing that I mentioned earlier about the, um, 30% matching funds from Water Environmental Services on any, um, wastewater capital projects that would be creating an improvement in the INI.
Are there any of the revenue generation concepts that you'd love to look at? Um, all of these are ones that have been discussed at various points by council. Um, the, just the status of these, the first one, the repealing marijuana ban, was discussed by you with Budget Committee, um, some time ago, didn't move forward at that point, which is, which is fine. Um, uh, you have discussed the possibility of a public safety fee, as Lauren describes here, um, but there's nothing moving forward on that, absent your direction to do so, um, either before, or as part of, or after the voting process, is a possibility for that. Um, the right-of-way work is moving forward, that's already happening, and Lauren already mentioned we're looking at park maintenance fee along with the standard of all of our fees. But the first three, I guess, remain ones that nothing is happening unless you want us to be doing something, or maybe bringing a strategy to move speed.
With regards to the, uh, right-of-ways, is that where there might be a space behind someone's home that is kind of city property in their mind, uh, that they're not paying taxes on, and when we review their, their, uh, boundaries, find that it's part theirs, or?
No, it's, um, it's for utility providers that are using, um, our city right-of-way, so, um, like PGE has their lines underneath our streets, and so they have to pay a portion of their gross revenues to us for that, um, and what we're looking at is going to a two-tiered system, um, and so, it would be a, you know, percentage of gross revenues, and then also maybe potentially a percentage of the linear fee in the, in the right-of-way, or a, a fee per linear fee.
Well, I guess I would bring that other thing up then, as kind of an idea, I guess we have a lot of, uh, dead properties behind developments, um, that technically belong to us, and an idea is that we could supposedly offer it to the property owners, um, or force them to take it, I wasn't really sure how that worked when it was explained to me, but then, they are paying property taxes on a slightly larger lot, it's not a ton of money, but over time it does add up. It's land that we don't really have any need or business keeping.
See Lauren taking notes.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, council right.
So, I have two comments, and one is on the, um, city easements that might be attached to somebody's property, um, we, we may want those at some point for some interconnecting trails between neighborhoods, um, that John would have more running to. And, and the other thing is on the new fees, we're talking about public safety operations, but is that the same thing as when we were talking about having like a sidewalk trail fee that we talked about a little bit when we were talking about the safety props to school, and how do we fund that? Is that, would that be the same? Okay, so that could be a different, a different one. Funding police efforts, okay, but it, it might.
Other topic.
Yeah.
I have a whole collection of, uh, random revenue sources that have been suggested to me. I think I mentioned I was gonna go around and turn over couch cushions and try and figure out if there was anything. Um, I mentioned to you a while ago, uh, franchise fees for other utilities, but it sounds like that's something that was kinda.
Yeah, that's included in the right-of-way area.
Um, and then, just significant increases in certain fees, but especially tree permits, because we don't even charge for those at all, that seems like a missed opportunity.
The charter says we can't right now, so that would have to be a change.
Sure. I mean, uh, I guess if I think back to how that was explained to me, there was a way around that, um, there's always tricky ways to do things. We don't wanna be generating revenue in sneaky ways, but I think there are creative ways.
Yeah, Council President Butler had one. Here, come on, here.
Uh, no, I think, uh, just a lot of different fees that could be increased significantly without any pushback.
And we can definitely, we, we do review, we, we do look at all the, um, fees, I'll be actually sending those out to the directors and managers in the next couple of weeks here, and they go through all their fees and see, you know, kind of look at neighboring cities, making sure that we're consistent, um, and not too far over where neighboring cities are, too far under where neighboring cities are. Um, also, I encourage them all to look at their cost for those programs, um, if it's, if it's reasonable to do that. So, um, you know, if it costs a lot of money, then maybe we need to be recouping some of that cost, um, or all of it, for that matter.
Yeah, uh, I know in parks, for instance, the fees, uh, for some of the facilities are just incredibly low, and that's, that's not comparable to other cities, and losing us money.
Well, um, I, I hope that we, we also consider outside revenue in addition to fees. I hate to be doing too much fee increasing, although I do agree with comparing, you know, the, the cost to implement some program versus have we, has, has it been too long since we've updated fees in this, in a given area, and what's reasonable to kind of update fees to be reasonable with today's expectations and standards? Um, but I, I would like to talk about, or hear suggestions, ideas of any outside revenue generating. Um, I'm, I'm thinking of the upcoming zone changes that we're talking about doing, and how that could maybe bring in, you know, commercial zones, and how that might change. It might change our tax base significantly, our, our revenue generation opportunities significantly, and how, I'd love to hear about, considering that in the conversation we're gonna have about zoning, um, because that, to me, is a significant change. I mean, I know incremental fee increases will pay off in the big picture, and over time, and are important, but I, I- and are important, but I, I wanna think bigger.
I, I think that's a great point, you know, our, our property tax base, obviously, um, our, our rate is very low, but our base is, is low, um, considering that we have such high, such values on homes compared to other cities. It's just that we don't have a ton of commercial and, or, and/or industrial. And so, um, you know, when you look at a base like ours compared to someone like Wilsonville's, their base is so much higher. And so even though our rate is so low, you know, we could use an increase in that base. And so if we can get more commercial or industrial, that would be fantastic for the revenue generating standpoint. Um, we also, you know, we are always looking at grants, all the different departments are looking at grants for their own projects. But also in finance, we are looking out, um, we have an employee who's always constantly looking for different grants and on different, watching different revenirs from different, um, agencies to see if there's any options and reaching out to those departments saying, hey, is this something that you guys would be interested in doing? So, um, we are looking for outside funding in that sense too.
Good, thank you.
I think it was brought up at a rec center meeting that we could perhaps contract someone to do the grant research and writing for us and they would pay for themselves in theory uh, without us having to add someone to staff.
We, we have talked about that in the past. It's, it's, I think there's the question of how many grants we have that are available to us and if it would be worthwhile in that sense. Again, we do have someone on our team who is, um, has done a lot of training on this and is very capable of helping write with, write grants. And so, um, I think that if we have, you know, if we have the capacity as it is, hopefully we could use that. But if we get to a point where there's a ton of them and we need someone, then absolutely it would be worthwhile if there's, if there's grants to be had. I think a lot of the, a lot of the grants, we don't qualify for one way or another. And so that's kind of a hard thing is finding the ones that we do qualify for and the ones that we can actually receive. So, forget.
And then there can be kind of a time component, right? Like if you don't act quickly enough, you're out.
There's a time component, there's, um, there's, you know, the capacity. Um, do we have the staff capacity to do the project that way? And then in addition, you know, as we were talking about earlier with the waterline funding and, um, these grants come with lots of requirements. And so it's not just, um, you get handed a hundred thousand dollars and you are good to go. You have a lot of work, um, on the financial side, on the project management side, and sometimes additional requirements that cost extra money too. So we always have to weigh those costs into it too, um, but we are doing all of that, so.
I would say if, if you have someone on staff who's really skilled and ready to go with that, I mean, that's more of a personnel matter, but it'd be great to let them loose and see what they can find, what they can do.
Thank you.
Good discussion, um, with regard to the repealing the marijuana ban. Does anybody have any thoughts? My initial thought to that is I'm really interested in kind of understanding what the attitude of what some residents is to that question, um, given that it's been since twenty sixteen. And have attitudes changed about, you know, I've heard that attitudes have changed towards marijuana dispensaries. Since it's kind of more like a liquor store nowadays, we do have liquor stores in town. But I just, I'm not sure, I don't wanna, to go down a path of something that leads to a huge amount of resistance because we underestimated, oh, a huge majority of people are opposed to the idea of that. So I'd just be interested in honestly having the city do some sort of outreach, uh, whether it's a survey or something presenting information and seeing what people's reactions are. Not that we're trying to go towards a certain path, but just seeing what people's perceptions are about the, that topic. I, I, that's, that's how I would approach that. I wouldn't approach it by putting on an agenda and taking a vote. I'd like to get some public insight from, and that's also a question that could be put to the voters too. And the, the return on investment is forty thousand to a hundred thousand, so not a huge amount to the city conference. So that's why I'm thinking, yeah, maybe if some way engage people's feelings about and just go from there once we get that kind of result back. I don't know, those are my.
I've just kind of started to float that a few times, not completely openly, but I've had that conversation and started it online a number of times. And the response, to my surprise, has not been, oh, that would be great tax revenue. I'm okay with letting that happen. I've been really surprised that it's, oh, great, I won't have to drive to Oregon City anymore. From people that I wouldn't have necessarily expected to say that in two thousand sixteen. So I really do get the sense that the attitude is significantly different. But we, we could easily get a sense of the public sentiment quickly.
Good, thank you for your thoughts. Good thoughts on that, uh, Counsel right.
So in two thousand sixteen, it did go to the voters to repeal it, doesn't it also go to the voters? Or is that something council can do?
I believe our research is that it doesn't need to. Thinking it's a formal vote? Advisory, is that right? Looking at doing that, because they have resources. So we can bring back that memo on process. I guess my question about outreach, um, are you thinking like a formal, informal tone in the water or city outreach done by ourselves or like a phone survey that we contract out to just get a round sampling of voters' seals?
I think one of your videos.
City manager video, uh, yeah, okay. I'll do that.
How much poll box on it?
We could start, uh, with the informal ones. Like I am completely happy to make a post asking that question, seeing what kind of conversation comes up. If it's all overwhelmingly in one direction, we can kind of know. If it's more mixed, then, you know, maybe we do go to a formal survey by phone and at that point another advisory vote.
Counsel President.
Um, or put it out to the neighborhood associations.
There you go.
Um, I'd also be interested to see what the police department thinks.
Yes.
I'm interested in the phone. I was thinking like a, a survey, just put out through our channels, but if that's not statistically valid sample of survey, but more statistically valid, it'll probably cost more. I don't know.
It would, so maybe some initial outreach with a few facts behind it for people to look at and then gauge.
Yeah.
I think that would be great. I mean, just, I wonder what we'd do anything without.
Exactly, I've held off on asking that question openly for that reason.
You guys on budgets for now?
Just thank you for the overview and, uh, it sounds like it's going to be a busy couple of few months for your department and we'll.
It already has been. This week was nice though because it was very calm around here with the holidays. So it was really nice to, uh, be able to get a lot of work done on that. Get a lot further than I thought I would in a week, so that, that felt good. Thank you all.
It's three o'clock, everybody. It's about to start getting dark outside. Probably retreat's over. We came in when it was light and, uh, we will probably leave before it gets dark, but we've got thirty minutes left on our agenda. And the next topic is kind of finalizing, we put down on the agenda, finalizing the twenty twenty-five or thirty month council priorities. And that, but, uh, open to suggestions as to how to proceed. We can always start the list and then re, do some workshopping and then revisit it as meet, in a meeting in the near future. It's up to the council how to proceed. So.
Uh, how are you feeling as just any manager?
Well, it never pays to do too much work when energy levels are low or when the day has been completed. We did go through each of the existing priorities earlier. We got some initial direction. I think there's two things we didn't do too much of. One of, one of which is other ideas that wanna be on this list that you would like to have introduced. It may be that all we do is, is, you know, work on specifics and reordering the existing priorities you have. Or maybe that you wanna introduce some new topics. And then the other thing that we didn't do too much of was the specifics, getting into the specific, um, milestones desired, uh, work products desired, all of that. That I could imagine could take some time. There are a lot of specialists in the room. We could probably propose some of those things on individual topics for you, either here or subsequently and come back to you for more discussion. I, we're open to either, um, but I do worry sometimes about pushing too far too long on one day. Yes, you have a meeting Monday, that's true. So, um, as always, it's your meeting.
I do have some prior, some things to float out there as potential additions or whatever, but I'm open to doing that today or another, at the recent, and soon, in a meeting coming soon, but I'm open to ideas, Counsel right.
Well, Mayor, I would love to hear the other things that you would like to add. I do have a couple of things in just how we go about producing these. And as, um, Counselor Groner had said, you know, having some more specifics would be good. But, um, as I said in our previous goals, we had what community advisory groups would be involved. And I think that needs to be a little bit more detailed. So this, you know, transportation thing should go, you know, the Transportation Advisory Board obviously will be involved, but how, what, what is their involvement and how will they be involved? So I think we could clarify that, which also provides some more direction for the advisory groups. If they know that they're working specifically to further, uh, council goal. And then, um, when CJ Cole was here, he commented that on our last goals, the neighborhood associations were not mentioned at all. And so maybe in, as we're putting together these goals, there are components of the goal steps towards the goals that we could, um, talk about, how it's communicated to or from the neighborhoods on, on, you know, how we're progressing or maybe even steps that the neighborhood associations can take to help us further those goals. And then probably the last thing is, you know, when we have these goals and we're getting our updates is some of them are nebulous enough that it's kind of hard to tell if what we're doing is working. And so if we could kind of figure out a way that we can analyze the actual effect that we're having as we move along on those goals.
Great ideas.
Counsel Vaughn, do you have some thoughts?
Yeah, I, I had wanted to try this, uh, but didn't quite get around to it. I think each of us have different ideas and probably a lot of them are the same or overlapping. But it would be nice if we could have compiled them and then had at least a little background about how feasible or what, uh, what the challenges, what the outcomes, all of that involved would be and reconsider it once we can pick from those and have them be more than just a topic.
So maybe we have everybody propose their thoughts and then compile them and then give some background, a little bit of background and, and revisit it at a meeting and finalize that.
Yeah, we could go down and just see if they all still fit.
Yeah.
Does that seem like an appropriate?
Thank you. I think those are great ideas. I was thinking while we were sitting here, um, and, and kind of reflecting on some of the partners that I've spoken to over the last few days preparing, that it might be nice to do this more than once a year, but we wouldn't need to go so long, so, um, period of time. It's also, it's also a different kind of an opportunity for the public to access us. So it's not a meeting. People I think are sometimes intimidated to come and maybe present in a meeting or even attend a meeting, but this is more, um, informal. We could even make it welcoming. We could have, you know, cookies and coffee or, I don't know, so that people know we really want your input here. So, but we could do what you're suggesting, you know, achieve some of these follow-up goals as far as what are our new priorities, but at the same time, maybe even focus on community engagement at one. You know, our goal is to hear from you. I mean, we always say that, just it's, it's a part of our meetings, but I think if you're just the general public, you feel like you don't wanna come because you don't have a specific ask or you, it might make it just more, we just wanna see you and meet you, kind of.
You know, on my, on my list with a star here is community engagement and, and actually town halls or something, that was one of my ideas. So kind of trying to get out into the community in a more accessible format than a meeting. I started to think our legislators are having these towns, we could easily.
The council used to do it.
Yes, you know, how, how do we do that? I don't know. That's, I'm tangent off of what you just said, uh, Counsel Vaughn.
I, I really like that idea too. Uh, I wonder if we could also do that online. I'm sure you're all surprised to hear me say that, but, uh, some, if we enabled WebEx to broadcast also on Facebook Live, we could actually, uh, coordinate with the community page and have thirteen thousand potential people who could access it and ask questions live. That could be really interesting and get people involved who wouldn't otherwise feel inclined to show up.
John, how do you think was the best way for us to document some of our priorities? Or should we all just take a couple of minutes to talk about?
Well, I would, and I think several staff, uh, would love to hear if there are different areas that you'd like to add in. Maybe just short roundtable on that, okay? For, for this, if you have, if you have thoughts on that, even if we can't get to specifics, but give, and give your, give each other a heads up and maybe see if there's some head nodding or thumbs upping that could happen on this.
I like that idea. Counsel President, go ahead.
Uh, I'll go with what we talked about earlier and haven't really, um, circled back to, which was tribal interests and, and I'm not even sure if I'm talking about outreach or education or engagement or, I mean, it's a lot of work that we need to do ourselves to start with, but whatever form that might take and however people are, however that hits the rest of council, what they want, what they want that to be. But something about, um, our engagement with tribal interests.
A trip to Grand Ron was one of the most memorable things I've done on city council when we got to meet with tribal council in their council chambers. So it'd be cool to figure out a way to do tribal engagements with the waterfront project specifically, given the connections to the area. So thank you for sharing that. Anybody who would like to, Counsel Groner?
I'd like to see a little more focus, maybe it's an individual item, maybe it's spread out over a couple, on public safety, including traffic safety, then walking safety, bike safety. Uh, that's one area. Any others? I've been hearing a theme of engagement and basically a little more focus on engagement in all its aspects, including the neighborhood associations and the advisory groups. Maybe even broader, how else can we engage with the public?
Thank you. Counsel right.
After we had the Neighborhood Association, um, discussion, it all of a sudden occurred to me that we could, instead of having a joint meeting with the neighborhood presidents, that we could have a Neighborhood Association open house. And, um, we could have a map where anybody that came could pen their house where, which, where their neighborhood was, so they would know the neighborhood. And we could do a posted exercise like we do for some of the other, you know, like we did for the rec center and, and we've done for the Vision Forty-three and the waterfront project, where people could put the biggest issue that they think is in their neighborhood. And we could just get a lot of kind of back and forth engagement, you know? Council and staff could be there to talk to people and, um, you know, some of their questions could be readily answered. Others of their questions is, maybe those are things that should rise to the top in future council work sessions or council meetings.
Um, I'm hearing a theme of more informal engagement and lowering the barrier for folks to engage. I think, um, there, there were town halls in the past. Uh, I was, I was here for some of them and I think the struggle was, um, is there an agenda, is there not an agenda? Why, what are people coming to attend for? Why, what are people coming to attend for? And if you had a specific agenda, then, well, I don't know. It was a challenge. Some staff were here, helped us, helped staff those. And I think the attendance was not great, but I wonder if we do things that are more counselor-led and less formal that would allow, it's almost like the, you know, the walk with Councilor Barrick or the coffee, you know, those things, is try to find other ways to meet people without setting so high a bar. The town halls tended to be the people who already knew and were comfortable coming and talking to you and giving the thoughts that you probably already knew they were going to share. And there's nothing wrong with that. But it didn't work well, as I recall, for getting new people engaged. So that's where I like the idea of different formats, trying a different thing, or running the back room at a coffee shop, or, I don't know. Maybe make them less, less logistically challenging and setting up the audio and the visual and the streaming and all of that. Find your own ways to do it.
I like that.
Whatever that was, you liked that.
It's sort of like an open house. It's not, the town halls, I remember those, but you're right. They were attended by most of the people who would already attend meetings, you know?
Yeah, and it was sort of council up front, audience members here. You had to like raise your hand or, you know? It's a little challenging for some folks. And now I'm sure what they bring up their issues, maybe the different ways of engaging would go along.
Well, it's as simple as having a phone going live on whatever platform and answering questions live. I've actually had that discussion with the admins for the community page about whether they'd be willing to help us have something like that, like an online town hall, so that we have access to all of their members, which are much more numerous than ours. We could do some pretty cool things that way, I think. But I had a really interesting idea that might have a tribal tie-in. So we're going to have an opportunity with ODOT presumably vacating that spot under the bridge at some point. Some of that is a park. And there's been proposals over the years about how that should be put together, what it should look like, and nothing's ever actually happened. But when they're moving out, there's going to be a lot of opportunities for them to weave things or set things up in a certain way that keeps us from having to do it again 10, 15 years.
You're talking about Westbridge Park and ODOT's requirement to restore the park.
Yes. So we could work with that to make sure that that's set up. But specifically, that area has some serious history going back like 5,000 years. It's, it has some significance to like the European settled version of Westland, but my understanding is it has significant tribal history as well. So maybe they would be interested. We could do something to invite and have that conversation.
Yes, definitely, there would be interest. And it would be more of the challenge of who gets, there's not an agreement amongst the tribal entities of who should be getting access. So that becomes a complicated issue, but I, I think we, those are conversations we should have because it is, it is, you're right, a historic area for people who were here before Europeans came.
As a park, who are we denying access to? I don't quite understand the question of who has access. It seems everybody has access.
Oh, I was specifically talking about tribal entities. So if I understood Councilor Barrington's question, it was about we would engage with tribal entities? Is that what you were meaning to kind of help us plan what to do there?
Yeah, that discussion about what would you like to see this space presented as.
And so my specific point was, who, which tribe do we talk to? There's not, there's not just one tribe. And the tribes among themselves don't necessarily all agree with which of them should be consulted. That's the point. I'm not saying that we're, as a city, denying anyone access. It's about creating, how to collaborate and how to make that collaboration inclusive to people who don't necessarily want to be all at the same table together.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification and thoughts. And that's a good idea. I don't always think about that park down there, but they do have an obligation to. I think it's part of the process they're going to restore that park to and even maybe put some funding into it. So that's a good idea. Two ideas I have. One, on the projects list, I hope to see the operations center. I know that's something that we're planning to build at some point, and I think it should be a council priority as well. And I know we'll be spending some time on it at some point soon at meetings. After touring that, the current one we have, I think it's a vital thing for public works and parks in our community to have a safe and functional ops center. Especially if we're heading into winter, so you never know what we'll need to do.
I can see that being an incredible opportunity to utilize video and social media and putting together kind of an explanation of what our current ops center looks like to help people understand why we need a new one.
Great idea. And maybe that's something we could involve BBC TV in. So the ops center, the other one, I have a few. If you'll give me some time. Highway 43, kind of Vision 43. I'm interested in the tax increment financing and exploring, you know, what it would take to get to jurisdictional transfer, a deal with state funding to help improve. So that's, I don't know, that's kind of Highway 43. Let's apply. Definitely the tax increment financing feasibility study and jurisdictional transfer. While she's writing, I'll go on to one other one. You know, ever since we went to Lake Oswego, I've been thinking, on that tour, I've been thinking about land acquisition and how it's so important. And the economic development, if there's an economic development tie-in to the land acquisition, because when the city is able to acquire some property, you can use it to help stimulate the economic growth. So I was thinking, it could be a fun task for the Economic Development Committee to develop, you could work with a consultant, maybe that person that came previously, and kind of develop a land acquisition strategy for the city. For our, and I don't know what that would look like or whether other cities have done that kind of thing, but a policy or strategy that kind of helps inform how we're going to go about the process, whether it's on 43 or somewhere else in the city, unincorporated pockets of land. You know, what does that look like? So that's land acquisition. That could be an EDC task. Then they might enjoy looking into that question. And then for the Transportation Advisory Board, I was, I'd love to see them kind of study the, we kind of already talked about, but study the ways to generate funding for these pedestrian and safety and traffic safety improvements and make a recommendation to the council at some point this year about, you know, this is what I recommend, whether you do the Milwaukee thing that they're presenting to us, where it's like they have this Safe Streets program with some funding, or there's other ways to do it. So that's just traffic safety funding strategy. Let me look at my list. The last thing I had was involving the utility advisory board in rate analysis work. They might be already being considered, but that was something they could do. Say they have a direct tie-in with that, and there'll be some big decisions to be made probably, what to recommend and how things are looking. So thank you, everybody, for giving me a couple of minutes here. So I'll yield for whoever wants to talk next.
Well, I have inspiration for those sometimes, right? But what I'm hearing is, I appreciate these ideas. These are great. I really value that you're talking about things of this, of this level of importance. I think these are the kinds of important things that a city council should be spending time on. And so this is great, particularly the operations center. And we appreciate your support very much on this. And the funding for this is going to be challenging. You know, we've seen construction success. We'll be coming to you with more information about this. It's a challenge, particularly the general fund could find it out. Earlier in the day, we spent about an hour going through the existing priorities. And I think we've collected a bunch of information there where we could take a first stab at remaking them and adding in the pieces you discussed, at least enough to send out a draft version to you to add in your specific thoughts and then bring it back to a council conversation and work session sometime soon. Keeping it going pretty fast, I think, so that we all have it within a year. There's nothing magic about calendar year, of course, but in this case, having it for the budget process is extremely fun. So I think those would be great. So what I can propose is that we, we could hash all this from my notes, everybody's notes, do a draft, send it out for your review and addition individually now this is for a meeting, and then compile it and bring it back for council discussion, probably late January, early February, something like this. But not much, not later than that, is what I would suggest.
I like that. And I think, you know, I just realized I rattled off a few of our community advisory groups, but I didn't, we didn't reach all of them at all. So as part of that process, I'll be able to give some.
But I love these specifics. And if they, even if they had, for most of the groups, if they had one specific thing, I mean, whether, whether the one you said is the right one or not, and your colleagues agree with it, but it would be a valuable meeting project and especially if you gave them a little bit of budget to work with, they could do a thing, feel valuable return with the product. And that would be a lot better than going in a lot of different directions, in my view. So I think that kind of angle would be really helpful.
Actually, finalize that in late January, early February, as community advisory group pass, a neighborhood association task.
Yeah. And there's, particularly for them, there's no magic to calendar year. You know, we can develop a priority, give them a priority project in April, then they start working on it. It's great.
So how does everybody feel about John's proposed path? What we're going to compile some things, and then we'll revisit this at a meeting. Got a work session the third week of January or early February. See, as time allows, we'll get this stopped. The other closing?
Well, I do have an interview.
Go ahead.
So this is not my role to do, but maybe it can roll the ride, so I'm not going to care. You know, said over the course of the last year, say what you want about the individual philosophy. I'm reading a book called The Daily Stoic. So you may be familiar with Stoic philosophy. It's been much abused in the internet sphere and, you know, taken to places that it shouldn't. But there's a lot of value in it, in my mind. It's a quote, every, every day and a little, and a little discussion. And we read it at breakfast, and I was struck this morning, January 4th, the big three. This is a quote from Marcus Aurelius. So forgive me, but all in eight of these, certainty of judgment in the present moment, action for the common good in the present moment, and attitude gratitude in the present moment, anything comes away. It's 2,000 years ago, right? So thinking of how that applies to the mission that you all have and we all have, the following reminder sums up three most essential parts of Stoic philosophy we're carrying with you every day. If all your perceptions direct your actions properly and eliminate something that's outside your control. So I just was really struck by that coming over here, and I didn't have any thought about it. So to, for you all to think about, I just think that, think about the attitude of gratitude. I mean, the fact that we're all here in this community, able to do this work with, I mean, all we talked about is like resources and people wanting to help and people wanting to do good things. That's amazing. The, the, the community conversation in this community generally right now is so positive. And as I said at the beginning of the day, I think you have, I think the five of you working with 140 of us have an amazing opportunity, which is pretty cool. And I just speak with the rest of the folks around here. We all feel privileged to do this work. Super cool. Having a conversation for seven hours about cool things we can do in our community. I mean, this is, so thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Council President.
Oh, thank you so much. And I, I am grateful every day and for all of you and such the caliber of people that are here in the city and the community and on staff and on council. I just couldn't be more grateful. And it is fun. People ask me, you know, wow, that must be a really hard job. That must be, just be terrible. And it's funny, because, I mean, it's challenging at times, but what, what about life isn't? Every life has challenges. So I just feel so fortunate to be able to participate in this process. So, and it's, it really is enriched by the people who we are engaging now, but also the potential of the people who we can still reach and what we can do together. So I agree with all of that. And I just have to put a plug in for Marcus Aurelius because my husband's been studying his writings lately, so it must be Marcus Aurelius time. So, and we just, we just celebrated Saturnalia at my house. So, yep. I have Saturnalia.
To that note, I ran into Mayor Denise McGriff of Oregon City at Market of Choice a few months ago, and she asked me how I was liking council. And I said it was fun. She was then confused about whether we were still talking about being on council or if I had changed the subject. Seriously, this happened. I understand that. I don't think most dynamics are like this in other cities or other organizations. We're very, very lucky. I hope that we're giving thought to how we can sustain this. And when things are great, I don't think any of us are taking this for granted, but how do we keep this going for years, forever?
I don't know how inspiring this is, but I have been very impressed by the mutual respect of all of us for each other, and I hope we can keep that going.
Thank you. Very inspiring. And, and Councilor Barrick, any, anyone? Why words for it?
I have no new inspiring words. But no, this has been, I feel like this has been a very productive day. I think we've, we've got some really great ideas, and I just love how we're all looking for how to make the community better.
Well, I don't have anything super inspiring other than thank everybody for spending Saturday with us and especially my colleagues on council for your service. You know, we do this because we love Westland for no other reason, and trying to move the city forward. And I'm excited, so excited to see some of the projects and priorities for me since 2021 come to fruition. And now we're looking towards the next 30 months, and it's just an exciting time. I think we're going to be able to do some great things. And 2025 should be a great year for the, for the city. So thank you, everybody, and thank you, staff, for being here, spending your Saturday with us, and Bill and Chad for running the technology, making sure that all works. And thanks for getting all the food in as well. That was awesome. And so we will adjourn until a long evening on Monday. Thank you, everybody.